Begin the meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. And this is a meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed operating and capital budget for this upcoming year. This meeting is being recorded by Burneston Northfield Community Television for future broadcast. It may be streamed live when available to do so, which it is this evening. This meeting is being held via Google Meet in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. There is a link available for the public to join this public hearing. There's also, if there's a citizen that would like to comment and is not able to access the live link, they are able to email citizenscomments@pvrsd-k12.org or call the superintendent's office at 413-498-2911, extension 603. And that number has been forwarded to someone who will be available to have your question answered or to direct you to our meeting this evening. Also, you are free to email tonyagelord@pvrsd-k12.org. So I'm just going to start with our call to order. So I will do a roll call here for our school committee members. We have Jim Bell.
Here.
Reyna Dastu.
Here.
Alan Genovese.
Here.
Michelle Gi Russo.
Here.
Jeannie Milton.
Present.
Robin Knight.
Here.
Karen O'Neill.
Here.
Nathan Swartz. Okay, I don't see Nathan yet. Michael Townsley.
Here.
David Young.
Here.
And I am Julie Burke, and I am here. So with our agenda this evening, first, we're going to start with the public hearing of the FY22 proposed operating and capital budgets. Then we are going to move to the school committee portion of the meeting, where we will be discussing and taking a vote on the FY22 budget, and then we will adjourn. The citizens' comments will happen during the public hearing portion of our meeting. First, you will see a presentation by our finance director, Tanya Galord, and our superintendent, Jonathan Schedele. So that will be the first part of the meeting here, and then we will take citizens' comments. So Tanya and John, if you'd like to take it away.
So we've invited Rick Kingsley, our overseer, to the meeting tonight to actually give a brief overview of our financial situation and just to kind of address the finance committees, the select boards that might be present, as well as the school committee, just so they have an idea before we present this budget, so that they can be thinking about the overall picture as they're considering the vote on this budget tonight. So I'm going to ask that Rick speak before I present my PowerPoint presentation.
Excellent. So Rick, you can take it away.
Tanya, can you take down the screen now? Of the agenda.
And we can't hear Rick.
Thank you. Yeah, he's muted.
I think that Tyler should be able to help us.
How about now?
Yes.
Is that good? Okay. Did you hear what I said at the start?
We didn't hear a word.
I said, "Thank you for having me, and it's a pleasure to be here."
Thank you for being here with us.
You're welcome. I just wanted to take a few minutes and talk about the status of the district's finances. As you know, the district's finances have been stabilized over the last few, couple of three years. The district has done a nice job with that, so you're to be commended for that. But there are some overarching concerns over the long term. And, you know, I think some of you have heard me, people like Mike and Tanya and John, have heard me talk about this over and over. So I apologize to you guys for repeating this, but it bears repeating, I think. And, you know, the big picture is that the state is really not giving us any much in the way of increased revenues. Eighteen thousand a year, which is, you know, not really sufficient in all. You know, the town assessments have been relatively flat over the last three or four years, too. But the good news is the district has been very careful in managing and controlling its budget year to year. And, you know, when I first started in the district two and a half years ago, roughly, the district was in the hole by over a half a million dollars, obviously because of the deficits. The borrowing essentially brought that up to zero. But in the last two years, the fund balance has grown to half a million, and this year it was recently certified at the end of FY20 at just a little over 700,000. So that's really good news. But because some of our other major revenues are relatively flat, we've had to develop a policy around how we use that E and D. We want to be very cautious about using an amount that is sustainable year to year. So in my view, that number is 150 to 200K. And that's something we need to keep our eye on. The budget needs to be controlled carefully such that we have budget turnbacks so that we can continue to build that year after year and continue to apply about the same amount each year to the budget. So that seems to be moving along pretty nicely, you know, due to the careful administration on the part of the district administrators. So that's really good news, I think. Of, you know, somewhat more concerning is the school choice revenue, which, as you know, has declined over the last 10 years in a pretty marked way. We are holding on to a modest balance of that, and combined with what we expect to get next year, we should be able to sustain that fund for the next several years. But what we don't know is if this is going to continue to decline. And my guess is it probably will because area-wide districts are seeing a decline in their enrollments. So there's fewer kids to draw from, even though this district is providing a good education, you know, with better outcomes than, you know, most of the, all of the neighboring districts that I checked, you know, Gil, Montague, Athol, Royalston, Mahar. So that's a real positive element, I think, is that you are providing good service. So the school choice is a concern. We've got to keep an eye on that. We use that, as you know, we've used that historically to offset our health insurance, you know. And so, you know, I did push back a little bit on the district and asked them to lower the amount of school choice used from 880, I think, or 860, down to about 660 or a little less. So that was a good thing, you know, we worked together to get that done. And so I think this budget is in a decent place. But, you know, anybody that isn't concerned about the sustainability of the district isn't paying attention, in my opinion. It's not an immediate problem, but it's something we have to constantly keep our eye on. We've got to monitor those school choice figures when we start getting some actuals for FY22. And if it starts to dip even further, which I anticipate, I hope it's slowing and, you know, the decline. But, you know, we really have to watch that. So with that said, you know, I think one of the things that would make sense for the district to work on with the member towns, you know, obviously, the district is funded by the member towns, and, you know, the member towns fund the majority of the district. So, you know, there are some districts in the state that have a revenue sharing plan. I know Gil, Montague does. I'm quite familiar with how that works. But Gil is a very small town. Montague's over 90% of the district. So as Montague goes, so goes the district. It's not quite the same in Pioneer. So, you know, I think one of the things that, I don't know if any of the towns have a special purpose stabilization fund for assessment changes. I know the town of Montague does, and it's not a bad idea. And, you know, when the district reduced the assessments for FY21 and saved the towns a lot of money, maybe some of that money could be socked away in a new special purpose stabilization fund for stabilizing assessments over time. Because the difficulty we have is even if the towns agree that, you know, collectively, they're going to contribute 100,000 in new money a year, the problem is how does that get divvied up? And the minimum contributions bounce around year to year, and that sets the stage for the assessments. So, and, you know, the enrollment proportions change. So, you know, one year, Burneston's assessment goes up, the next year, Lydon's goes up, you know. It changes. So that's not a bad concept to consider, in my opinion, for the long-term sustainability of the district and making sure that your communities are continuing to be competitive in attracting students from neighboring districts. I mean, unfortunately, it's a situation of survival of the fittest, you know. And, you know, in some ways, districts are cannibalizing each other and competing for these limited school choice dollars, you know. Unfortunately, it's not the same as the charter assessment, which is about, you know, 14,000, $15,000 a pupil. It's only 5,000 a pupil. So that's my piece. And, you know, I wish you all the luck with the budget tonight. And I know it's not easy being on the school committee. And I know, I was sorry to see Kristen leave. I thought she did a nice job. And I know you guys all have a hard job. You're all working for your communities. Sometimes that doesn't jive with the interests of the district in all cases. So, you know, try not to get discouraged and hang in there, and I appreciate your work. Thank you, and I'll take my leave now, unless anybody has a question.
Looks like Michelle has her hand raised.
Hi, Rick.
Hi, Michelle.
How you doing?
Good.
My concern, you know, as we talked last week, is the increase in assessments to the other towns. Obviously, Lydon is in good shape for this year. But when a town gets free cash, we're always told by the DOR, "You shouldn't be using it to balance your budget. You shouldn't be using it in your operating. You should be putting it away for a rainy day or special projects or that." And my concern is here, I look at E and D like free cash, like the towns have, "And where are you going to use it?" And, you know, if that's going to run out in five years, can you comment on that?
Sure. Well, that is certainly not the plan. The plan is to use 200,000 in this year, and during the course of 2022, we will replenish it by monitoring the budget very carefully such that we have a similar number at the end of '22. So that's the hope. You know, you are correct that, you know, basic, you know, the basic best practice is that you don't use your E and D or your free cash to support operating expenses. But, you know, the city or town has revenue growth that the district really doesn't. You know, your tax levy compounds by two and a half percent. You get some new growth. You know, the governor handed out some new unrestricted general government aid for FY22. So, but the district doesn't have any of those things, really. So there isn't much choice. But the idea is to make this a sustainable thing that we can do from year to year. Does that make sense?
It does. But, you know, E and D.
You muted yourself, Michelle.
Oh, sorry. I did it the opposite. It does make sense, but like we know in the towns, from year to year, we can't rely on a certain amount of free cash. And if something happens one year where we don't have that E and D, you know.
Well, you know.
Over budget. It's all I'm thinking.
You know, you're right to be concerned, but I think this district administration has got a good track record of managing the budget throughout the year and making changes when they need to be made. So it is really incumbent on, you know, the administrative staff to make sure that this budget is adhered to. And, you know, if you see warning signs four or five months in, that's the time you act. You don't wait until the end of the year and say, "Oh gee, we had a deficit in this account." You need to take proactive action when you find out that there is an inkling of a problem. And I expect the district would do that.
Thank you. We have a couple of more members who have questions here. Robin Knight?
Yeah, I just have a question because I'm not really sure where this stands on the process. But what you, some of the things you've talked about, Mr. Kingsley, how does Warwick leaving the district affect that? Is that taken into consideration with what you've talked about tonight?
Well, I'm not sure where that stands. I mean, if that occurs, it's not a positive for the district, in my view.
Okay, and Alan?
Yeah, hi, Rick.
Hi.
So I'm trying to, you know, thank you for helping the district get to more financial stability. It's greatly appreciated. When, I'm wondering, when you look at the budget and you're looking at the finances, and I was glad to hear you talk about, you know, trying to be competitive, you know, with other districts and so forth. You know, my expectation is the district is going to have, you know, an educational plan that we'll see that lays out what they would like to happen, let's say, over a four-year period on programs and services to kids where they're trying to do things for the middle school and the high school, and they're looking this evening for world language at elementary. So when you look at the financial piece, how do you balance or are you part of those conversations on if you add this and then you project out all the related expenses with it, health insurance, employee benefits, and so forth? Do you take that into consideration in your conversations when you're talking about the stability? Because one part of me hears you saying that, you know, "We try to manage and have a very modest growth within the tolerance of the towns." And at the other end, you know, "We're still trying to be competitive in doing some things." So how do you financially balance that? Or are you just looking at trying to have a tight budget, and the administration has to figure out how to move things around within that to tweak it and make improvements?
Well, I think, you know, as I said before at the beginning, there's really only so many places to go for our revenues. And, you know, so the district is constrained a bit in terms of offering new programs. You know, with the school choice, you know, we have constraints there as well. So, you know, can the district build in, you know, big plans to expand programs without funding? No, they can't. You know, it's just not there. But, you know, every budget involves some risk, right? Every single budget you put together, your personal budget, you know, the district budget, your town's budget, it all involves risk. And so what you have to evaluate is, is the risk tolerable? You know, is it manageable? You know, or is it not manageable, such that you need to make changes to that budget or reduce it? You know, and I think the budget you've got in front of you, you know, is manageable. You know, it wouldn't bother me if a few fewer dollars from school choice were used. But, you know, again, I see your point about, you know, I'm not here to micromanage how this committee spends money. I truly am not. I'm not going to say you should have this position over this position, unless it's, you know, a finance position necessarily. So, you know, that's the way I look at it, Alan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Rick. Tanya, I see your hand is raised. Are you just ready to begin your part of the presentation?
No, I just wanted to comment real quickly, and then I think Michelle had another question. We have, Alan, over the last couple of years, as we've made improvements in financial choices, to actually build in some contingencies for things like special ed out-of-district tuitions and the transportation that goes along with that, and changes in staffing salaries if we do have staff changes during the year. And part of managing that is when we work with our administration and are making staffing choices and other choices in the district, to not use those contingencies unless we absolutely have to. And that's part of being able to continue to replenish our E and D is by administratively managing our operations and not using those contingencies unless we absolutely have to.
Right. And I'm not talking about contingencies, which, of course, you know, any administration would build that into the budget. And the budget is very fluid. It's a plan. And that plan changes constantly during the course of the year. I'm talking about how close an eye do we have? For example, if you put a, let's say you put two or three new positions you'd like to do in the following year. And with those positions comes health insurance and a number of other benefits. Does that play into, I guess, there'd have to be a constant monitoring of how sustainable the, because what you don't want to do is put something in and then have to take it out, you know, a year or two later, or shift it and say, "Gee, we put this in the elementary, you know, this year, but we have a real need two years from now to be doing something at the middle school or high school, so we don't have the additional revenue. We'll have to not have, fund that anymore and shift the dollars." So I guess I just want to make sure we're all mindful and that I wanted to see how Rick was taking that under advisement and consideration as he's looking at the sustainability of the district. And, you know, I did hear him say we have to be very careful about adding new programs and making sure, I'll use the word tolerance, we're staying within the tolerance of affordability to the towns while we're still offering a competitive education. And the risk he was talking about was probably that, you know, if we certain things, we might attract more school choice kids and therefore give us some more revenue. But you have to be careful because you can't, you can't, you shouldn't be trying to fund positions based on school choice dollars coming in. You should be using those dollars to support other things.
Okay. I just want to, in the interest of time, because we have community members tuning in to hear the budget presentation, and I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak. So, thank you, Rick. And, Alan, did you have something else to say? Your hand's up again.
No, I was trying to lower it. I'm muting myself.
All right. So Tanya and John, you can begin your budget proposal.
Tanya, do you want to begin?
Yeah, sorry. I was just sharing my screen again. So I did speak with John and Mike earlier today, or maybe it wasn't a conversation with Mike because we've had some discussions throughout the week. But in the interest of time this evening, because we do have to vote on this budget, the plan is to go through and specifically target the slides that affect the categories that have been changed since the sixth grade move was delayed. However, I do have the entire PowerPoint presentation available. So if anybody is tuning in from the initial public hearing and the initial budget, some of the slides have not changed. And if there's any questions regarding those sections of the budget, then I'm happy to answer questions or go back to those slides and review those as well. So if Julie and Mike are okay with that, I am going to skim down to the sections that have actually had a change in them regarding the sixth grade move being delayed, if that works for you guys. Yes? Okay, good. All right. Sorry, just bear with me a second because I want to make sure that I get all of them. And I do apologize. I noticed the date hadn't been changed on the spreadsheet that got sent out. Just really quickly, obviously, the total budget that we're proposing this evening has not changed from the $14,851,290 that was originally presented. Just the categorical split has changed based on the categories that have changed with this budget. So the first section that changed with our budget is our elementary instructional assistant. And as you all know, as we go through the budget process and even after our budgets voted, there are needs to come about, things that change, things that get evaluated. And between the time we had our last public hearing and this current one, as we've been working on this budget, there are a couple of things that have come up and been evaluated further with the additional time allowed. And we did end up adding back into the elementary instructional assistant budget, the IA that was in the NES budget that serviced some of the Title I students for math. The reason for that, to be short and sweet, is the Title I funding is done based on poverty levels and enrollment in different, in each of the schools, and based on the allocation of the funds that we're receiving. Even though we only have two schools that we're funding, the allocations are heavier on the Burneston side, but we still have the needs to service a certain amount of students at Northfield. So that addition was added, and that was $24,126. So that was added back into the elementary instructional assistant budget that had been initially removed in the first budget presentation. Our next section that has changed is the elementary salaries. And simply, all that happened here is we moved the teachers that would have been teaching sixth grade at the high school level back into the elementary budget. So there was previously a decrease of about 19,000 in the elementary salaries budget, and now we've added those four teachers back to the tune of 220. And you'll see the decrease on the PVRS salaries. So they've just been reallocated back into the sections accordingly. The same with our elementary supplies. The sixth grade supplies were moved into elementary supplies from PVRS supplies. The amount that was in the PVRS supplies line for the sixth grade move up was $7,700. The amount needed, excuse me. The amount needed, excuse me, to have those students back at the elementary level was only $5,800. So we did see a slight savings there of around $1,900.
Tanya, I think Jeannie raised her hand.
Okay, sorry, I've got two spreadsheets up, so I can't actually, or this and a spreadsheet, to make sure I don't miss any sections, so I can't see the raised hand. So I think Julie or Tyler was going to call on the town members to speak during the public hearing. I don't know if we were going to follow up.
We probably should have clarified at the beginning that, you know, Tanya and John would do their presentation, and then we would take questions. But, you know, Tanya and John, if you're comfortable with the questions happening during the presentation, it's really up to you.
I'm fine either way. I also have a summary of these changes in an Excel format that I'm happy to put up on the screen after the fact as well, that shows the actual figures that we already presented at the school committee meeting as well last week or two weeks ago.
Okay, Jeannie, why don't you go ahead and ask your question? Your hand is raised.
Tanya, could you please go over those, those teacher changes based on the sixth grade not going to Pioneer?
So all that is, is we originally moved four teachers to the high school from the elementary school budget, and those were budgeted at the $55,012 per teacher, because they were going to be new, new positions based on some retirements. Those were moved back to the elementary school, two per school. So it was a net zero wash, and I can throw up that spreadsheet real quick, just so you can see that it's a net.
No, I just, I guess I just didn't hear you say that it was $55,012 per teacher earlier. I just heard $55,012. Then I heard the 220,000, and I couldn't figure out how those came together.
So it's four teachers. Yep, so it's the four teachers, and you can see here in the summary of the changes.
No, I've got it now. I have it now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure you guys have your questions answered and have all the figured.
And I just wanted to make another note. If you do want to ask a question, you can just raise your hand, and I will, I'm watching out, so I can call on you to ask your question. Okay, thank you.
No problem. All right, let me just scooch down here to, we already covered elementary supplies. The next budget that changed, and it was very minimal, was the insurance and benefits line. This is basically the line where the net of all the changes that were reallocated from the sixth grade move being delayed were moved. So it decreased, this budget has a decrease in use of our school choice funds by $8,200. So again, I'll put up the summary of the changes once I'm done going through the individual spreadsheets, just so you guys can take a look at that and have it all in one clear concise picture. But you can see here the note that says the school choice offset decreased by the net savings in the sixth grade move delay. The next budget that was affected was our PVRS administration. This simply was a decrease of about $15,000, because without the sixth grade move this year, we will be keeping the dean of students position instead of transferring that to an assistant principal position. And the PVRS salaries line, so there are a couple of changes in here. Obviously, the, the four teachers at the $55,000 apiece were moved back to the elementary. So that was a decrease of 220,000. We do have a .5 middle school art teacher in here that, as an administration and committee, we decided was beneficial to keep in here to service the entire middle school, because it wasn't specific to sixth grade. Our district hasn't had middle school art for a few years. So we felt that was important to add back as a program. The next thing we did, the original budget that had the sixth grade move in it had a .5 adjustment counselor. But in discussions of delaying the sixth grade move, as well as the entire adjustment counselor that was cut last year to save the town some money and try to be very conservative going into this year of COVID, not knowing what was happening, we are asking to restore that adjustment counselor to one full-time equivalent to be able to serve the high school students, but also to be able to help with the transition and actually be visiting the elementary schools and working with the fifth and sixth grade students as they transition to PVRS the following year. And that's the only changes at the PVRS salaries level. As I mentioned before, the PVRS supplies budget, we reduced by the $7,900, which was the original supplies that were in there for the sixth grade, and 5,800 of that moved back to the elementary level to service those students. So this comment about the, I'm sorry, the supplies being adjusted based on the per pupil calculation takes into consideration that those sixth graders will no longer be moving to PVRS next year. In our special education budget, you'll notice that we, I'm looking to see where my comment is. One of the things that was not needed was there was going to be a special ed teacher required at PVRS in addition to the teachers that we already had, based on the allocation of the special ed students without the sixth grade moving to PVRS next year. That is no longer needed. And I think that was it for the special ed. Let me just make sure I got all of the, and that's it for the actual changes in the budget. I'm going to go ahead and put this spreadsheet up here, so you guys can see the summary in the categories that those changes happened that I just reviewed. And I do apologize, there is one other category that changed, is transportation. We included four bus trips from both elementary schools to the high school for some transition visits and orientations. So that was included in our transportation budget change. And that nets out the original 167,000 that was in the budget for the sixth grade move to happen in FY '22, and the reallocation of those funds to service the students in the district and make the transition possible for fiscal year '23. Does anybody have any questions specific to that? Or would you like me to move on to? I mean, I guess we could move on to the vote, unless anybody wants to look at any other sections in this particular budget. With this budget, the assessments to the towns do not change, because the total budget is the same. So going over those isn't really necessary, but I can certainly scroll down to what the town assessments would be for each of our towns, so that you can see that. Because I know that's one of the things that the towns are certainly concerned about.
I do know that ahead of time, two people had asked to speak. So if they would like to do so now, it seems like the appropriate time. I believe Jane Dutcher, you had asked to speak at the public hearing?
I did ask to speak, in case I would have any questions. I knew I needed to ask ahead of time if I wanted to be with you. At this moment, I don't have any questions, but I know that you're going to, someone's planning, I believe, to put forward an amendment to this budget, and I am not in favor of that amendment. I'm also discouraged to think that in not moving the sixth grade, some of that savings could not have come back to the towns. I wind up with this feeling that you think we have bottomless pockets, and we don't. I guess I'll reserve any other comments I might have to save them for later, if I have another question. So, thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Jane. And I believe that, and I'm going to butcher their last name, I'm sorry, Matt Sosier?
Close, Julie, Sosier, thanks. Thanks for trying. I just, so I'm Matt Sosier. I've been working at PVRS on and off for four years. And I'm the current middle school counselor, for those that don't know me. And I want to thank you all, the school committee, for your willingness and dedication to put our children first. I just want to talk a little bit towards the pieces of the budget for PVRS and the importance of those positions that are being added or reinstated, I guess I should say, is a better way of putting it, is more accurate. It's been a tough year for everyone, and I think we can all agree on that. I've watched weary teachers and students ready to return to a sense of normalcy that's just out of reach, and has just been out of reach for a year. And I had one parent say to me the other day, our kids are watching us for a solution to a global problem. We have no idea how to solve, and realizing that the adults around them can't always solve every problem. And the veneer of security that we are providing for our students and our kids is slowly being eroded and replaced with fear and anxiety and loneliness, and all of that is bubbling to the surface. With our collective trauma from this and individual trauma, I've seen an overwhelming increase in mental health needs with the students in our district. And we haven't even scratched the surface of the mental health fallout we'll see as a result of this pandemic. We have strong community mental health organizations in Franklin County who support the many mental health crises, from substance abuse to self-harm to COVID-exacerbated anxiety needs. And these organizations are completely maxed out with extensive waiting lists full of students and young people and adults who have intense mental, mental health needs. And this includes our children. And we need to think creatively and commit ourselves to providing the potentially lifesaving supports they deserve. Our school counseling office this year has been tasked with a job of four people, with a staffing of two and a half. Janice Towne, our admin assistant, spends part of her day in the main office, and we no longer have our adjustment counselors, you know. And just because Lucas, Correa, Covert, and I have adjustment counselor licensures, it doesn't mean we have the hours in the day to extend ourselves to do more than one person's job each. And we still do that. As the middle school counselor, I'm extremely proud to see that this budget includes the return of a full-time adjustment counselor and a middle school art teacher. And this includes the return of programs, including counseling groups, career, you know, additional career exploration that we had to cut out this year, grade-level transition programming, programming addressing safe and responsible technology usage, drug use prevention, connections and referrals to community resources for students and families, and so much more creative prevention work. And middle school community building, we will be able to do with a fully staffed team. And our arts program is maxed out. And as such, middle school students craving healthy expressive outlets that the arts provides face an obvious gap in that programming. And I wholeheartedly believe that both of these positions can help save lives. And I don't say that with hyperbole. I really, truly believe that that is true. I've seen it in my daily work, as I juggle the mental health needs of our kiddos. And as we think about sixth grade coming to PVRS eventually, and the continued exacerbation of mental health fallout from, from COVID for families and our students, I want to thank you all in advance for really enthusiastically, hopefully, supporting this budget with the inclusion of these positions. And thank you for putting our children's safety first and their mental health needs at the forefront of our district and towns' priorities. So thank you all.
Thank you, Matt. Um, I see that Michael Townsley has his hand raised.
Yes, Julie. I'd like to make a motion to amend this budget to bring it to 0% budget to include world language in the elementary schools, starting in the fall of this year. If I, the budget we're talking about now. If, Tanya, do you have that number, so I can state that number?
So I do have the spreadsheets prepared for that, but we actually have to conclude the public hearing and move on to the next agenda item for the vote before that amendment is brought to the table.
Correct.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion until that time. Thank you.
That's okay, sorry. I just wanted to.
No, that's all right. I'll withdraw the motion until that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jeannie, you have your hand raised?
I do. I don't know if Matt Sosier is still at the meeting or not, but I want to thank both him and Lucas for going above and beyond during the school year. I know how difficult it was for you. And that's why I so fought, fought so hard to maintain an adjustment counselor position for this year. So thank you, Matt, and would you please pass on my thank you to Lucas?
Okay, thank you, Jeannie. Raina, your hand is raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Jeannie said, that, you know, Matt and Lucas have been doing a fabulous job. And, you know, you're only two people. And I'm, I for one, I'm really glad to see that, that you're going to have a full-time adjustment counselor at your side next year for the kids and, and for the staff. I think it's well deserved. And I'm also really happy to see that this budget, with the delay of the sixth grade move, we're still trying to replace some of the programs that have been lost over the past few years and also taking the time that we need to really plan a robust, you know, really strong middle school model.
Thank you, Raina. Jeannie, your hand is up again? I'm not sure. Okay. I know that we have other members of the public here with us. If anybody would like to speak, you can go ahead and raise your hand, or you can just begin speaking. So, please do so before we conclude the public hearing portion of the meeting. I'll just give it a minute. I realize it can be a little intimidating to speak at a public hearing, but I promise we won't bite, and we'd love to hear from you.
Julie, if there are no more questions, then I would move that you, that we close the public hearing.
Yep, I was just given in a minute here, in case anyone wanted to ask. Okay, so, um, yes, so we can close the public hearing portion of the meeting. So those of you that have joined us for that portion, I just asked that you log off now, and you can join our live stream via Facebook at this time through BNTV. Give everyone a moment here.
Julie, can I just ask a quick question too? And I think we invited the Finance Committee chairs and the Board of Selectmen, if they chose to attend, to stay on for the remainder of this meeting, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, they were part of the invitation for the school committee meeting as well. So feel free to, absolutely. Okay, so what I'll do is, I'll do a quick roll call again. If that's necessary, maybe Adam could advise me on this. With the public hearing portion ending, do I need to do a separate new roll call for the school committee meeting, Adam?
For what portion?
So we're going to move into the, the school committee meeting now. We did a roll call at the beginning for the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't know, if you're not going.
It's all the same agenda, Julie, that was posted.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you very much. So, um, we will now begin the, the deliberation for the FY '22 budget vote. And I believe Mike had a motion to make. Yep, Mike?
Yes, I'd like to.
Yes, I'd like to move that we move the budget to include world language in the elementary schools for this coming fall. And if Tanya has that number, I can, to bring it to the 0% to include that world language.
Sorry, my unmute button has not been working very kindly for me tonight. I'm just going to zoom in on this a little bit more, so you have it available when you're speaking to this, Mike. So, when, when Mike is speaking about a 0% increase, he is speaking about what would bring this budget to being a level assessment based on what our original FY21 budget was supposed to be, between our capital and our regular assessments, which was a total of $9,338,639 before we cut 4.29% from that budget last year. That total is $38,000, or, sorry, $36,891.
So, I'd like to move that the, yeah, if you want to just explain it a little bit more, that's fine. You know, I'd rather have people have a clear understanding.
So, when we discussed this, there was some conversation about the extent of building a full-world language program. And what we discussed was putting the funds back in the budget to be able to do that, and then continuing to work with the administration and the CNP. I do believe CNP met last week to discuss what would happen with this. So Karen may be able to speak a little more about what CNP decided on this, but it would then be structured such that those funds would be used to start the implementation of the world language program and bringing it into the elementary schools for a full implementation for FY23. So, that was the last conversation I was part of, and I was not able to attend the CNP meeting. So Karen, if you want to speak a little more to what you guys decided and discussed last week, that might be helpful as well.
And just a point of order, Mike did begin a motion. Did you want to-
I'll finish the motion, then if somebody seconds it, then we can move into discussion or deliberation. And the curriculum personnel committee, I believe, would do their presentation at that time as part of the discussion. If that would, if that works. Okay. So, the amended, the amended amount would be the $36,891, bringing the budget, I believe, to, correct me if I'm wrong, Tanya, $14,888,181.
You are correct. I'll just highlight that so that the committee can-
Okay, so that's my, that's my-
I have a point of order.
Somebody wants to-
I don't know how we can, we don't have the original budget on the floor. So, how are we talking about amending it? Is he making the, an original motion with this caveat? This is highly irregular.
No, I'm making a motion, I'm making a motion to amend the budget of $14,851,290 to the amount of $14,888,181.
I know you think you are, but you have to have a motion. I know you think you're amending it, but you have to have a motion to amend. Somebody needs to make a motion for the budget.
That's my motion, David. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, Mike. I think his point is, is that first you have the budget, and that's on the floor, which we haven't done. And then, Mike, you would offer an amendment to that budget, because we don't have an original budget on the floor. So, someone would make a motion to approve the budget that we had before, you know, second, and then you could make an amendment to it. So, I think that, we're getting the amendment before we have the budget. I'll be quiet.
Sorry, sorry for my mistake. You're correct, Alan. I guess if somebody, Julie, go ahead, somebody's going to have to make a motion on the original budget. My mistake. Sorry.
You can do that, Mike, as part of the chair. You're chair of the budget subcommittee, so why don't you make the motion?
Well, I don't want to overspeak. Anybody else would like to do that?
One thing that's important is that we, 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 we'll just use the hand raise button just to, just to alleviate everyone talking over each other. So, what we're looking for now is for a motion to approve the FY22 budget as proposed from the presentation that we just had. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll move that. I'll move that, the budget of $14,851,290.
All right, do we have a second?
Yep, a second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to, I got my hand raised, so I'll wait.
Yep, if, we need to vote on this first if there's no discussion. So, okay, so, Mike, where, do you have a question about the current budget?
No, we can go ahead and, I guess, vote on that.
And it looks like Jane has a question. Jane Dutcher, go ahead.
You're muted, Jane.
All these things you have to do to be able to speak, they're too much for an old lady. If Mike wants to make an amendment, or anyone else wants to amend this budget, you need to do it before you take the actual vote. You have now made a motion to have the budget on the floor and adopt it. If you want to change anything, now's the time to offer the amendment. Robert's rules of order. If you vote on it now, then you're going to have to do a rescind your motion and all that, so, thank you.
Now, now, now we can amend it. You're correct.
Okay, could, Adam, can you just clarify for us, so we make sure that we're doing this correctly?
Yes, you know, you haven't laid out properly. You have the second. Now you could have an amendment if the, if that's approved, and you vote amendment.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. David, your hand is raised.
Yeah, just a point of order. So, so Mike will make his amendment. We will vote on whether to amend the motion. If it passes, then we will discuss and, and vote on the amended motion. If it fails, then we will go back to the original motion unamended.
Right.
Okay, thank you, David. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so, Mike?
Let me try that again. I'd like to amend the budget.
Oh.
Jeanne Milton's got her hand up.
I'm a little concerned. When, when will we hear what the, what the CNP committee discussed? Because that's very instrumental to my vote. I need to hear that before I can make a vote.
Yes, and you, and you will. So, Mike is, is going to do his motion, and then we will have a discussion regarding the amendment. And Karen will present before we vote.
After, yeah, after the second, we'll have a discussion. Okay, so you all said, Julie?
Yes, I am. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to move that we amend the budget $36,891 to bring the startup program of world language to the elementary schools, which would bring the new budget number up to $14,888,181.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and we can have our discussion. Karen, I see your hand raised.
You're muted, Karen.
Thank you. The curriculum and personnel subcommittee did meet on the 17th last week. As a result of that, we voted unanimously to include provisions for the teaching of exploratory foreign language at the two elementary schools. Now, here was what happened at the meeting that Jeannie asked about, and I'm sure others are interested in. Kevin McEwen, a foreign language teacher at Pioneer, provided information about two different approaches that can be taken to the instruction of foreign or world languages. Of the two, the exploratory approach seemed more appropriate for a first-time endeavor. It can be provided to as few or as many grade levels as desired. No prior language experience is required on the part of students who may come to a school or leave a school. And it includes the following main elements. It develops an interest in foreign language. It develops cultural awareness. It develops listening skills and linguistic awareness. In broad outlines, Mr. McEwen envisioned a minimum of 30 to 40 minutes a week per grade in each of the two schools, with perhaps extra time, if there was some, in the schedule, at the kindergarten and final grade of elementary school level. To accomplish this, funds would go to a locally-written curriculum at the start, an entry level higher, and some support materials. And finally, Mr. McEwen showed a very short video from Edutopia Foundation, which outlined the potential benefits of foreign language instruction at an early level, such as creating a sense of community both inside the school and the broader community, diversifying the staff, preparing students for secondary school foreign language, and further developing cognitive skills such as problem-solving and facility in one's own first language, which have been correlated with language instruction. After a lengthy Q and A with Mr. McEwen, we voted unanimously to include it in the FY22 budget. I'd be glad to answer questions if you have them.
Michelle? Yes, sorry, my mute button is clicking as well. I might have Tanya's issue. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, I just want some clarity on, I heard that a new teacher is $55,000 plus benefits. So, what is this $36,000 going towards?
I'll let someone else answer that question.
How is that going to happen?
Mike, I see your hand is raised. I don't know if you can answer that, or should we leave it?
I would, I would ask Tanya or John to explain that. And also, when they're explaining the cost of that, also to touch on the choice and charter out that we're dealing with at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Tanya or John, Michelle had the question regarding 36, okay.
So, again, the first-year implementation of this, this is not going to necessarily be a full-time teacher in every grade level and every classroom implementing this world language. It's going to be a phased-in section. And there will be further discussions between CNP, as well as Ariel, and our foreign language teacher currently on staff to figure out how to best use those funds to start implementing this world language program. And as Karen mentioned, it will be possibly part of a teacher's salary, as well as some supplies and instructional material to get this started. And then we will look at what that would look like in the following year. There are, and this is kind of on another topic, but there are some funds for high-quality instruction and curriculum as part of some of our grant funding. We aren't intending to use any of that, but that might fall into part of our discussion. But the intent is not to have a full $55,000 teacher the first year. We're looking to implement this, get it in the classrooms as a start to see what kind of interest there is, see how it works with the administration's schedule at the elementary schools, and be able to have time to plan a full curriculum, I think, for the following year.
Okay, I just want to add to that. So, the following year, we'll probably be looking at a full-time, which would be 55. What's the benefits amount? 25%, 20%, 30? Do you know?
So, we, we do build in extra plans already into our health insurance. So, it's not always, just because we add a staff member, we add a benefits plan. But we do pay, they pay 25%, we pay 75%, and it depends on the type of plan that they have. So, it could be 6,000, it could be 16,000, but we build in those extra plans for staffing changes. And since I've been here, we haven't used up all of our plans. And we do take a look at that every year, Suzanne and I, to determine how many plans we should be adding. And it's based on the plans that are already in, like whoever is actually enrolled as of January 1st as well. So, all that's taken into consideration.
Well, no, I'm just looking for a new hire. So, a new hire, you usually know what the benefit is with vacation, sick time, time off. It's usually-
So, vacation and sick time aren't extra costs. That's part of their salary. So, all it is, is their salary and their insurance benefits.
All right, 20%. So, we're talking, we're talking-
It's about $75,000.
Yeah, right, $65,000. And then we're going to be adding middle school. And we, we didn't cut the $175,000. We just redirected the funds. So, I'm very concerned that we're looking at a $300,000 increase next year. We can't keep redirecting funds.
So, the only position that wasn't actually added to the middle school for the sixth grade with this move is the PE teacher. The remainder of those funds are for the supply transition and a change in administration. But as this gets looked at further, we may or may not need all of that. And that's where the planning and the transition committee will come into play and speak to the budget subcommittee. So, all those things will be taken into consideration when we look at the sixth grade move.
Right, and that's why I thought we were going to plan for world language, too. So, that's why I'm kind of shocked we're hearing about it now and not just putting it as part of a plan for the next year. But, you know, I think it's great for the kids, but then again, I'm just thinking about the towns. And, you know, if the budget keeps going up, if they're going to approve it, or if we're going to be back redoing the budget, that's, you know, it's the, so, thank you, Tanya.
Thanks, Michelle. I see, Karen, your hand is up. Maybe you meant to, oh, no, now it's down. Okay. Michelle, your hand's still up. If you could lower it. Alan?
Yeah, my, my question is probably for Karen. So, you had mentioned phase in, and Tanya mentioned that. So, is the thinking that you might have it in, like, kindergarten 1, 2, or 1, 2, 3, 4, you know, grades like that? And then, when you talk about phase in, so, so you'll do it by grades and then, and then, you know, write your curriculum, and then, and then maybe add a grade the next year? Is that the idea when you talk about phase in?
Well, I would leave that up to the professionals in that field, the administration and the foreign language teachers, to discuss what might be the best approach. We did not discuss that, but the program they're looking at is applicable to any grade. They could make the decision, and because they are more familiar with the, the programs, they could- they could assess which grades would be the most beneficial to start the program in.
Okay, I just wish we had more, more of a overall plan, more of a comprehensive plan, so that we weren't sort of doing this on the fly. You know, I feel sometimes we do things piecemeal. We do, we just add, and we don't have a comprehensive plan. But if we were leaving it to the professionals, I have no problem with that. That's where it should be, and they should be making those decisions. I have no question about that. I was just hoping they had given this some thought before, and were approving it, and then they're going to make those decisions, and we don't know what those decisions are going to be.
Well, Alan, this has changed since our meeting somewhat, so those questions might have been asked if that change had not occurred. But I think that Kevin has been thinking about, Kevin McEwen, has been thinking about this for a long, long time, and he gave us a very comprehensive look at how it could be ideally, and what we could start with if we wanted to start a program, or if we wanted to keep it limited, what it could look like. So I'm confident leaving it in their hands.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Alan. We have lots of hands raised. I do see John's hand, hand raised, so...
Okay, thanks, Julie. Yeah, I just want to clarify, at the CMP meeting, Kevin McEwen talked about a pre-K through 6 program and running it through specials similar to the way other specials in the elementary schools happen now. So our plan would be to offer it as a specials, like, once a week in a 30- to 40-minute block for students in preschool through 6th grade. It's called a FLEX program, so it's an introduction to the world languages at the elementary level. You know, and then we, we had talked about reassessing if the district or school committee wanted to move into a longer-term plan, which would, of course, require funding down the road of what's called a FLEX program, which is when you have a pre-K through 12 district-wide foreign language program. That would require two additional full-time teachers, obviously, you know, curriculum that goes along with that. So that's kind of a longer picture, you know, down the road. But we thought getting the world language and the benefits into the preschool through 6th grade for next year and doing it as a, as a specials class was a nice way to introduce it, you know, to those students, so they have exposure at the younger ages. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Jeanne, I see your hands raised.
It is, thank you. I, Tanya, what is the cost? What is the increase to the town assessments?
So the, okay, so I can pull up the town assessments. I was actually gonna comment, too. So the reason the $36,891 was chosen is because that was the difference, let me pull up my screen again, sorry, I put it down, because I know it makes it harder for you guys to see everybody in the meeting when I have my screen presented. But the idea was that we were using, bringing the amount to a 0% increase over what, whatever we originally voted in FY21. And that's where the $36,900 or $891 came from. I did want to point out the fact that we do not have to put the decrease, what we're using of school choice, by the 8231. So we could shift this 8231 into the elementary salaries as well, which would give us a total of $45,122 to, to be able to have a little more to implement this fund, or implement this program to a fuller extent. And again, this, because this was brought up, you know, by our committee members, and with everything else going on this year, we have not had time, obviously, the administration or the curriculum director, to research programs and curriculums and all those kind of things, and have those full meetings to implement this. And that's what would be happening between now and the beginning of the school year, so that we could make the best use of these funds to implement this program at the elementary school for next year, to the extent that we'll be able to with the funds available. And that was what we discussed at the meeting.
That's not what I, that's not what I asked. I want to know what the increase to the town assessments will be, if this is...
So that's, that's piece one. I have the assessments up. Bear with me for one second. So the assessments with the increase are as follows. So these would be the new assessment, oops, sorry, the new assessments to the towns, and I do have a comparison on the original assessment sheet, so you guys can see those side by side for comparison. And I, I did present this, I believe, at the school committee meeting last week as well. So Berniston's increased assessment would be $13,433. Lydon's, they had, they had a decrease originally of $30,000. Now their decrease would only be 28, for a difference of $2666. Northfield would be $17,498, and Warwick's would be $3294. The next step of this that I didn't do yet, but I could do behind the scenes while you guys are discussing this, is I can break this out by the average taxpayer to show what that would affect the average tax bill as well, if you guys needed to do that.
No, I don't need it, but I will say, based on the town of Berniston, this will not be, this, if we increase the budget, it will not be approved by the finance committee in the town of Berniston. They will reject it. Thank you.
Can I just comment real quickly in response to that, too? Just because I've been on the town side as the town accountant, there are many times when a finance committee and even a board of selectmen will bring items to the town floor without a recommendation, but the town members, who are the parents and have the students in the schools, will vote for those budgets. And I think because those are the people that are affected, and they are a larger population than just the committees, that they are the ultimate decision-makers in the budget being passed or not passed.
Tanya, I understand that I've been at many, many town meetings. What I said was that the finance committee will not recommend this at town meetings.
Thank you, Jeanne. I see that Robin has had her hand raised.
Yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the bilingual piece and why we would be doing that and be working on languages. I think before COVID, I had the opportunity to do quite a few presentations down at a Holyoke Elementary School that is a, that runs bilingual classrooms all the way through that school. And they have done extremely well in bringing students from all backgrounds from Holyoke into that school. So, and just, it was like, actually exciting to see all these children and the teachers go back and forth between the two languages and the ease that they did it with. To say nothing about how inclusive it does, it makes, with, to teach people about inclusion and diversity. So I literally was like, oh, my gosh, I would have loved to have sent my children to that school. It was just a really exciting program, and it was pretty cool. The other thing is, is that if we are looking to make changes to help keep students in the district, and to ask, and to think about more students' school choicing in, you know, if we're able to offer something and move forward in a way that we've got a really vibrant piece to our curriculum, you know, maybe that could, you know, maybe that would help us in other ways, too. And I think that's part of the reason also of doing this, is to try to bring more children in. So I think it's awesome. I would be wicked excited for Brody to be able to learn to... ...languages. Thanks.
Thanks, Robin. David, your hand is raised.
I think it's a little rich to hear all the interest in school choice. Closing Warwick cost more than 20 school choice slots. But what I want to say is, with respect to this amendment, I really support the activity, but I found my level in terms of the amount, that budget I could support with this original number. And when, and it involved an increase for a plan that's been delayed, but we didn't take money away. I don't think it's, I can't support tacking some more on to this, to this budget. So I'd be entirely agreeable to us finding a way to do this within the voted amount of money for the original motion, but I'm gonna vote against increasing further. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Jane, Jane, your hand is raised again?
Jane, you're muted. I need one of you to push my unmute button for me.
No, you're, you're okay now. We can hear you now.
The finance committee has neither discussed nor taken a stand on the school budget. Obviously, in our discussions outside of our meeting, while we're still together, have not been totally in favor. But we have not discussed it formally, and we have not taken a vote formally. So I just thought you should note that.
Thank you, Jane. That, that was an important clarification. Thanks. Let's see, Jeanne, is your hand raised again, or was it never lowered?
I actually was, I know we're discussing the foreign language thing, but part of what Mike asked me to do was discuss the, the school choice, and just to kind of show some numbers on enrollments, in hopes that if we are going to build our programs, that yes, they're going to cost upfront initially in the budgets, but the payoff will hopefully be in the next two to three years, that we start seeing either our receiving increase or our sending decrease, so that we're retaining our own students in the district, as well as maybe attracting other students in the district. If we send three students to a charter school right now at $24,000, that pays for an entire teacher benefits and a possible new classroom at Pioneer at the high school level or at the elementary level. So just three students that go to a charter school, not going to those charter schools when they get to 7th grade, because we have programs at the elementary or high school level that can support their interests and needs, would allow us to then decrease that expense, which we have no control over. If a kid goes to charter school, we have to pay it. We have no say in what they're spending it on or whatever. So those are fixed costs we don't have control over. But by building our programs and trying to recover our district, it will take some investment on the, the front side from the towns and the district and the administration, but the payoff is in hopes that we will stop the bleeding of the kids out and be able to retain some of our own students. So I'm gonna really quickly present the choice-out history first, just so you guys can see this and have some food for thought. And then I will quickly go over the information I was able to pull together on the charter. The charter's not as extensive, but it does have some good figures in it. So part of this information comes from the state website, and then I added some columns in that had some changed calculations and so forth. So the biggest thing that I just want to point out, you guys can certainly look at this, I'm happy to share this document with the full school committee, I just put this together today, but I think the biggest thing to take notice of is our receiving has been cut in half in the last six years. And this happened through the attrition of losing teachers and the change, prior changes in administration, as well as, you know, enrollment issues. But our sending has doubled. So if you go back and look at 2009, the difference between what we were receiving for school choice and spending was a net revenue with the, to the district of $1 million. We now have a net revenue of $222,000. So just in those few years, we've lost $800,000 in revenue just from school choice. So is it gonna, is this gonna fix it overnight? No, but we have to start somewhere, or the towns are gonna end up paying more, because the state mandates these choice and charter costs, and we have no say in them, and it's gonna mean more cuts to our district students if we don't start building our curriculum and adding to our programs now. And then the charter piece is a much smaller, because it wasn't nice and pretty and precise from the state website. So I just compiled this, and of course, I'm having technical issues, I don't know if it's internet or not, so I apologize for this being small, because it's not wanting to let me zoom in. But our net district cost for our charter has also doubled since FY16, which is another $200,000 in cost to the district, because our FTEs at the charter schools have increased by roughly nine students in those five years. At 20, now 24,000 of students instead of the 19 that it used to be.
Michelle, if you could mute for just a second. Okay, go ahead, Tanya.
No, that's okay. And then the last piece of that, and I know everyone, you know, has questioned and talked about it, I'm gonna go ahead and zoom in now that my computer's cooperating, is we have 42 students in our district from Vernon in FY16, which was just a short five fiscal years ago. We now have 14. If those students were still in our district today, it would be about $544,000 in extra revenue we would have. So between Vernon, choice, and charter, we have essentially lost $1.5 million in revenue in the last six years. And the fact that the school, the assessments to the towns have gone up less than half of that in that time period means that the district is managing the budget while providing the students with a quality education, and we're just trying to build on that, and it is gonna take time. But I do think that by doing that, we will be able to negate our sending being almost as much as our receiving in our school choice enrollment. And that's all I have to say about that.
Great, thank you, Tanya. Mike, did you still have something to add, or were you prompting me to, to have Tanya give that?
No, I guess, yeah, no, I guess something to add. My concern is, I guess, the parent's view of our district. And if we don't invest in the, in our district, our choice and charter numbers are gonna continue to go up. And we see what's on the budget line for the choice and charter. I believe it's $866,000 going out. Correct me, Tanya, if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct.
And so we're, we're nearing the million-dollar mark if we don't invest in our school system, because parents are taking note that if we don't offer or make changes, they are gonna leave us, and we're gonna send that million dollars to other schools. That's, that's a million dollars that we could be putting into our own school system. This program, this FLEX program that Kevin McEwen talked about, to the Curriculum and Personnel Committee, I believe is a wonderful idea. It's a starting point. It's financially responsible. We're not asking for 1.2 or 3% over the original FY20 budget, or 21 budget. And my concern is, what are we telling our parents and students in this district? Are we gonna, are we gonna reinvest? We went, we went through a tough two-and-a-half years to bring ourselves under control, and we've done that. We've shown that we're fiscally responsible. The overseer is, you know, basically standing with us. He says, survival of the fittest, risk management. This is a risk management situation. It's not much money, but the management of who's leaving us and what it's costing this district. I mean, I hate to see a million dollars go out the door to fund somebody else's school system, but that's, that's what's going on. If we don't, if we don't invest the small amount of money this year to get this program off the ground, and then it may be three... and then maybe three to five years have bilingual speaking students that are going into the middle and high school. And keep in mind that parents, uh, have to realize that if their children are, when they become young adults and they move off to college, that a lot of them, depending on what their career path is, if they select a career that requires them to take, uh, to test out of, of a foreign language in their studies, they're probably going to be able to test out of that foreign language studies and save themselves probably $800 a semester for that course. So this, this is far reaching and I really think that for the cost of the implementation of the start of this rollout plan for the flex and we build on it, we're going to have to build on it to, to bring it to where it needs to be. We're going to be one of the only schools or probably will be the only school in Franklin County that is doing something like this. Starting at the elementary, working our way up. I listened to Kevin McEwen speak at that meeting and he said that, you know, if they get up to eighth grade, what's the, what's, what's the next choice? Are we going to offer them college level courses? Well, that would be wonderful if we could do it because now we're really setting apart, especially for college, for job market, for cultural diversity. Um, I mean, I listened to John, he, I believe he said there's, uh, in, in our district, I think there's 10 languages, uh, spoken. We need to keep, keep up with what's going on out there in the real world. And investing this $36,000 is not going to break the bank, but it will possibly say to some parents, hey, they're doing something different. We're going to stay here instead of tracing out or chartering out at $24,000 a pop. So I'm 100% in on this. This is, this is the wave of the future. We need to, to move on something that benefits the kids. And keep in mind, the two elementary schools is where it's going to start. That's where our biggest number of students are at this time. And it would, it would really benefit them, uh, greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, John, your hand has been raised for a while. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Julie. Yeah, I, I kind of like to echo in and say, you know, we really do need to invest in our, in our families and our students here in our district. Um, when I came on as superintendent three years ago, there was no curriculum coordinator, grants manager. You know, I was acting to some degree in that role of trying to set up an early college program, Greenfield community, bringing a criminal justice program and looking at unique course offerings that we could provide, you know, these opportunities for our students that, you know, to stay in our district and not leave our district. And, and charter out or choice out to other districts. And I think we have some wonderful things that we've done and are doing. You know, uh, especially now that Ariel's in, you know, involved and, and just redesign and reimagine and looking at her three-year district strategic plan. We have some exciting things. I wanted to ask her if she wouldn't mind speaking about a few and even Kevin Burke, um, some exciting things that, that are happening at Pioneer. Um, but I do want to say like, not only financially are, are, are we invested, but our staff. Um, a lot of them, you know, stayed through these rough years. Um, a lot of our staff have been with the district a long time. We have incredible teachers and staff. When the MCAS scores came out two years ago, I believe we were only maybe second to four rivers in our, in our test scores. Like, you know, our students are provided a, a, a excellent education. I think we have some of the, uh, best staff anywhere you can find in the country. Our teachers are dedicated. They've been here. And we've had teachers come back. I mean, after leaving the district or being let go, we've had staff members come back to the district these, because they love our community and we really need to start investing in it. And it's going to pay off for the towns and for the communities because hopefully these students will be giving back to those towns and communities as they get older. But we have some really exciting programs. So I just wanted Ariel to quickly speak on some things that are happening now and happy in the future, the same with maybe Kevin Burke that could, um, you know, speak on a few things. So Ariel, I'll turn it over to you. Uh, thanks, Julie, for letting me say that.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Ariel, the curriculum coordinator. Um, and I, I have a couple of things I, I want to tell you about. And first, if, I don't think I've told you as this group this, but so I've been in this district for 14 years. And when I came here, um, I had been teaching for four years and I came to Pioneer and it was a completely different kind of school. And it took some adjusting because I came from, I was, had been teaching in Ludlow, which was very, you know, textbook curriculum, very black and white and big school. And when I came to Pioneer and I got hired here and after a couple of years, I said, this is the school I want to stay in for my career. I want to retire here. And I was fortunate enough for the following seven or eight years after my first couple of years to really experience a golden age of Pioneer and of myself as a teacher and of other teachers that really brought to the school amazing energy and programming. And a lot of that came from before I was there because what I came to know about Pioneer is that there is a Pioneer Way that is part of its roots, that is, comes from these towns and comes from people who invested in the school very early on with great educational philosophies. And that's what made Pioneer what it was. Um, I knew people who had gone to high school here. I did not grow up in this area. And Pioneer had a reputation, a really good reputation when I came to it. And, um, and then eventually things changed, as I hope many of you know about that story. And we went through a very difficult time and we lost a lot of things. And I managed to hold on and stay through that time and watched that, that amazing educational experience and happy kids and happy faculty crash. And that's when I started showing up at school committee meetings. And once all that was over, um, I applied for this position because what I wanted to do was I wanted to revive our district because I really valued the Pioneer Way. And it can't be the same. You can't repeat the past. But we have something really special to offer that comes from our towns, that comes from our land and comes from the great energy that the people who have stayed or come back. And I did a lot to bring people back and ask them to come back because, and they did, they wanted to come back because we loved this district. So I moved into the position of curriculum coordinator. I'd been a high school English teacher for 16 years. And I see my job as a lot of, a lot of things, but, um, kind of twofold. First of all, for teachers and for principals, I do whatever I can to provide resources and remove obstacles. That means I apply for grants. Um, I use those grants to get materials. I fund programs as best as I can. I work with the principals and superintendent to manage programs and figure out what is the best to do. On the other side of it is, and this is kind of what I brought into it, was this vision of how do we move this district not just forward, but up and forward. And the admin team came up with goals, uh, and two of them I want to talk to you about in connection to the things that we're doing. Um, our district goals include financial stability, super important. Um, Rick Townsley talked about that earlier. Um, revisioning what education can look like, community partnerships, which is you, the towns. And then the third is focusing on social and emotional learning because even before the pandemic, that is a key area for making sure that kids have what they need in order to be able to learn. And everything that Matt Suetzer said earlier, I stand very much behind that. So the two goals that I focus on the most are the revisioning education and the community partnerships. Now, this happens to be, which many of you now know, I applied for a community partnerships career and technical education grant a year ago um, for a hundred thousand dollars and I got it. And one of the things that makes me good at being a grant manager is not so much the spreadsheets and all of that, but is the ability to write what I would say is initially fiction and make it come true. I create a vision. I put together a plan and I sell it to the state and say, look at what we can do with this money. And they bought it. And they gave me a hundred thousand dollars to bring to this pro, to bring to this school district, programs that will bring career and technical education into our regular high school situation. Now, I interpreted this very differently than the Desi thought, uh, initially. And I, and again, like I said, they, they went for it. And I talked to them a lot about how our towns don't exist if our land isn't part of, isn't functioning. If our farms all die, if our, if our family communities no longer are able to sustain themselves. So our land is important to who we are, as are the region's, um, focus industries and what is actually around us that are the jobs that students are going out into our communities and hopefully staying in our communities and what, what skills do they need? We lose kids to tech. We lose kids to charter schools. Um, and they, so when they choice out, they choice to tech, they choose wherever. So, um, I've done a lot of research. I've done a lot of reading and I kind of came to the conclusion that not, that schools in general, public schools, um, especially regional schools, rural regional schools, really need to do more to be like charter schools. Now, what is it that charter schools do differently? They do education differently. They have a, a different, more imaginative, more community-based, um, sometimes specialized way of doing school. We are a tiny school district and we have a whole bunch of unutilized resources like our land, space at Pioneer. And so the plan that I put forward is that, and this goes to some of the things that Alan was saying and what Rick was saying, you know, Rick said that we are restricted on new programs, restricted revenue. Um, so grants helps with that, but grants doesn't fund positions because it needs to be something that's sustainable. So you can't, you can hire somebody for a year, but then they're gone and that's it. So what do you do with money that's here now, gone tomorrow? You build an infrastructure that's going to change, take what we have and use it more, use our resources smartly. So that when people are in our town and looking at what we have to offer, we have college and career readiness programs that are technically based. We have interesting and amazing things, which I'm going to tell you about in a second, that nobody else has. And I agree with Mike Townsley that to have a world language program in the elementary school will certainly be attractive to people. And at Pioneer, what we've been doing is we've been working on building our, um, biomedical program, which leads to certifications for students. We've been working on expanding our environmental sciences program and really taking that to the next level because what we want to do, what my vision is, because we do have limited resources, is how can we do blended learning? How can we open up our school walls and use our community members and our community, um, companies to help educate our kids, to bring our kids out into real world experiences? And priming them from eighth grade on up into forging a pathway, a pioneering pathway where they look to the future and they look to their communities and they say, who do I want to be in this society? And what can I bring to it? And what do I want to do when I grow up? What do I want to be? And we nurture that dreaming and it's just dreaming. It's not some excessive adding of programs. It's taking what we have, it's improving it and building it and letting kids and individualized education opportunities really be, um, a driving force for that pioneering pathway into, into being better communities. So that's, that's kind of the vision and the dream. Um, so in improving the environmental sciences program, um, and there's all these sort of other opportunities that are coming up as well, early education internships. Um, I just went to a webinar today that's on certifications in different technical fields and curriculums that can be imported into other courses that will mesh together, blended learning, um, that actually provides kids with certifications so that they can use them in careers. Um, I've been working on heavy partnerships with Greenfield Community College and trying to really bridge that so that students can do inter, um, take electives and test out career fields and get some credits, college credits on, for free. Um, and then also encouraging them to do dual enrollment, which is a kind of separate thing if they want to do that. So, but through our environmental program, um, we are really opening up the school walls. Um, I'm using this grant to, uh, build an outdoor classroom that anybody can use. Um, we are using this grant to, um, furnish the biomedical program, which is leading to all sorts of health sciences and certifications in CPR and, um, and all sorts of EMT things. Um, and then we are also, there is a vision of, and it's coming together, a, basically a, a farm and garden lab that will be literally a classroom opened up out into a laboratory that is outside, that involves all sorts of elements from ecology on up. And that is going to make our sciences so much more hands-on, as well as make our campus a, a whole different story than most high school campuses. And there is, are more things that we are, we are working on and working on getting funding again through grants and things that are here today, gone tomorrow. But if we build the infrastructure, if you build it, they will come. If we build the infrastructure, we can, we can, uh, grow into it and we can kind of reshape the classes that we have, add courses as we can. We are limited in that because we only have so many teachers. But if we reshape them and we look to this kind of progressive, deeper learning education, which the state is all about, which is the trend of where it's going, we then become attractive like a charter school. And with other regional schools around us, you know, there's all this talk of us merging with Turner's Falls. I've been working with Mohawk Trail Regional School. We have more commonalities in our rural nature and we've been pooling resources. We've been pooling kids so that we can afford courses at GCC and cover those. And the person I've been working with there, we have this idea of, um, a northern regional consortium where we become magnet schools. We specialize, we share resources, we pool kids so that we're utilizing the resources we have to the utmost ability that we can to keep kids in our towns, but also provide them with state of the art education. So a lot of it's dreaming, but a lot of it's coming true. And, um, that's, that's it.
And Ariel, I just want to add, like, we have our innovation center. It was a former woodwalk, uh, woodworking shop. Um, but there's amazing things happening there with robotics. Um, you know, with engineering classes, new engineering classes, um, the 3D printing, laser cutting, CNC routing. So there's some, uh, you know, amazing things happening in our innovation center. Also in, in new courses and new opportunities for students. Kevin Burke, you know, if you want to talk just a minute about like our ropes, potential ropes course and things, um, to add on to what Ariel said.
Yeah, I think it's, um, and just to, to echo on what Ariel said, uh, March 13th, um, almost exactly a year ago, we were working with our faculty in professional development. John Lepore, um, who is a, I believe, a, a Berniston resident, was, was there with his stewardship plan. And, um, we were talking about re-envisioning, reimagining education and blended learning. Obviously, that was the day that we closed down schools for the pandemic. Um, but even with that, with everything that's been happening with the pandemic, we've still been moving forward with this vision and this plan, um, which I, I think is incredible. And what I think is even more credible is that the teachers, even with all the stuff that's on top of them, they, they still want to move forward with some of these things and are putting the effort into making these things happen, um, which is great. One of the things that we're looking at bringing is a ropes course. Connections with, uh, Brad Miller from Next Level Adventures, um, and John Ireland, who is well known in, uh, making ropes courses um, in Western Massachusetts. And, um, you know, we've walked the area with him and, um, with Brad Miller and John Lepore. Um, in the stewardship plan, there is a place located for a ropes course. Um, and we are now working on a, you know, concept design for elements and doing a, a low and high course. And when you look at ropes course, yes, there's a fun aspect to it. There's a physical aspect to it. But really, when you look at ropes courses, one of the biggest things it brings is team building, unification with groups, with teams, um, the physical, mental fit, fitness, um, social, emotional health. Some of the plans that we have, and Matt Suetzer has been involved in this too, is that, you know, when, when we're doing transition, bringing in the sixth grade, bringing in the fifth grade, having them participate in those court, in that courses, in those low, we would have low and high courses. So I think it, it would bring a unique thing to our school and we would be able to actually, um, get students involved in multiple ways. The other thing that, that, um, is moving forward is, you know, Matt, Matt Suetzer, a few years back, had brought mountain bikes into the, um, Pioneer Valley community, which has been utilized a lot as a club. But one of the things we need to do is revitalize our trail system. Um, there's a lot of erosion that's been occurring on our trail system. Um, and last Friday, actually, um, John Lepore walked with, uh, a, a few of our Um, and last Friday, actually, um, John Lepore walked with a, a, um, a few of our teachers and walked through the trail system, looking at how they can actually do this revitalization. And some of our science teachers are looking at how to incorporate that into the classroom um, and making it a multi-use for people who can go walk these trails, use them as mountain biking trails, they'll use as cost country trails. So, I mean, we have a huge resource. We have 90-plus acres, which I believe is the third biggest land-owning um school district in the state of Massachusetts. And our goal really is to utilize this land and have our students go outside and, you know, break down the uh industrial kind of thought process of education, where you go in and you sit at a desk and you learn. We're, we're trying to move away from that and we have a lot of great ideas um, and a lot of solid plans, um, thanks to a lot of hard work by a lot of people.
Thanks, Kevin. So Julie, I'll turn it back to you. Just, I just wanted to bring up some of the things that are happening in the district that are, uh, you know, exciting um for our students and our families and our staff. And again, acknowledge the uh incredible job all our staff are doing, especially through COVID um and beyond. And again, they're going above and beyond and we keep moving forward as a district, you know, working on things. So thanks to, to everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you um to Ariel and, and Kevin and, and John. Wonderful to hear about all of the initiatives um that are underway in our, in our district. Um, I do see some more hands raised. Um, I also did have, um, I've been monitoring the Facebook feed um periodically to see if there are any questions that are being posed there. And there were a couple of comments um that community members would like me to read. Um, so I'm just going to take a moment and read the comments. Um, David Pontius says, I am troubled that this world languages plan is being driven by the school committee. I would love to hear what the administrators of our schools think would be a better investment. As a parent, I would think, I could think of a dozen other things I would rather see in the elementary school. Um, and then we have um Lauren Clary. She says, I would have loved to see the school committee ask the teachers what program they would love to see come to schools. I teach fifth grade and I would have loved to see the following before world language. Number one, classroom support. Um, in parentheses, A, um, excuse me, IAS slash academic coaches that have been shaved each year over the course of the last five years to help the budget crisis we had. I would like to see them returned, especially after a pandemic when the academic gap is even larger. Number two, hands-on slash STEM, S-T-E-M, science program being brought to classrooms. Um, and three, after-school enrichment programs slash clubs for elementary school. So I just wanted to make sure I, I addressed those comments. And thank you for um making those comments in our Facebook feed. Um, so I do see that Raina has had her hand raised. So Raina, you can go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to add a comment as um a member of the CMP committee. And um, one of the things that came up in the presentation that we had is that um younger children actually learn languages, they're programmed to learn languages um at a, at a faster rate. And so that there's a greater benefit by introducing language at a younger age. Um, and um, by doing that, that the children become more proficient over time. Um, and then also, when they reach the upper grades, um, if they have, once they have that language proficiency, um, they have the option of choosing a third language, um, or an additional language, um, if they have, have gotten, you know, the proficiency in the basic language. So um, there, there was definitely some um, some real benefit to introducing it into, into the younger grades. Um, and I also just wanted to say that um the vision that Ariel um shared with us uh is, is a great vision. It's really wonderful and exciting to see these things happening, to hear about the things that are happening and, and um the, the things that we're going to build on in the future. So that's it.
Okay, thank you, Raina. Um, Jeannie, you have your hand raised, and then Karen, and then Jim. Oh, I think that Jeannie had her hand raised by mistake. So go ahead, Karen.
Again, from the subcommittee meeting of curriculum and personnel, Kevin spoke to um the fact that, to his knowledge, we were the only uh school district in Franklin County considering an elementary foreign language program. So that indeed would set us apart. According to what he knew, the closest um elementary school system with foreign language is Amherst Public Schools. So um, yeah. He also really emphasized the value of the diversity and the appreciation for other cultures that comes with foreign language learning. And I was truly amazed to hear there were suddenly so many different languages among the students in the district. And that the world is changing and we should be at the forefront of allowing that change to benefit the students of our district. I'd like to thank everybody who's worked on the plan we have so far and to thank um Ariel and Kevin for all the things they have brought to Pioneer. Um, I did send uh Ariel's slide presentation to all members of the school committee, which details a lot of what she had to say tonight. So if you haven't had a, a look at that, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Um, Jim.
He's still muted.
Jim, you're still on mute.
Well, I had good things to say. Hello, everyone. Um, you know, I just, I've been at Pioneer for 25, 26 years, long time. I've seen a lot of things come and go. Um, I'm not at Pioneer, I don't coach at Pioneer because of the wonderful track facilities that I've been given for the last 25 years. I'm here because it's, I've been in big programs. I'm here because of, to me, it's a unique place. I just love it, I love the kids, I enjoy coaching here. However, I'm confused, where are we right now?
So Jim, are, did you cut out, are you asking a question where we are right now?
It's, and I've heard a lot of really good things, okay? But it seems like we're all over the place. And I'm sorry if that's, it's just, it seems that way to me. So we had um a vote in our future sometime, maybe?
Yes, we do, correct. We were in the discussion portion. Um, we had a lot of um, of comments that we needed to address. Um, I have some myself that I've been waiting patiently until um everything was um presented. Um, but we will be taking a vote uh this evening. So we will try to do our due diligence here and, and wrap things up, um, being respectful of everyone having the opportunity to weigh in. So is it okay that I, that I make my comments now, Jim? Are you finished?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I just wanted to um make a couple of comments myself. Um, you know, there, there are some really outstanding things that I have learned about the district recently um that I wish could be kind of plastered on a billboard um in all four towns. Um, and just, you know, a couple of those are, um, even with our overseer, Rick Kingsley stating that, um, you know, our, our outcomes as a, as a school district, um, you know, fare better than our neighboring districts, um, which is pretty incredible. Um, our, our MCAS scores are second, we come in second place in Western Mass. Um, you know, a lot of our expenses are related to um our, the salaries in our district are, are quite high, which is actually a good thing because we're paying more money for levels of expertise that are truly um incredible. We have teachers with um decades of experience teaching um the, the children of our district. So with that, we're going to need to pay a little, you know, a little more for them. But the quality of education, giving their level of, of experience and their, their commitment to teaching um is really of incredible value. Um, we have a good track record. I know that we have had our struggles, um, you know, with the lunch deficit in, in years past. Um, but we, over the past few years, we've had an, a really good track record of managing the budget throughout the year um with our current administration. Um, you know, and, and I want to address the comment that um someone had made about, you know, we don't want to have the impression that the towns have bottomless pockets. Um, I promise you, at least from this school committee member's perspective, I, I know that the towns don't have bottomless pockets. Um, I am a taxpayer. My, my parents live here in town, they are taxpayers, um, and they are retirees on a fixed income. Um, my brother's family is here in town. Um, you know, where I have, um, just my family alone is quite a few taxpayers. So I, I completely um understand that and feel that. Um, but the schools are the heart of the community. Um, and I know when I was shopping for homes, one of the first things I looked at, I didn't look at communities if the school district wasn't, didn't have a solid reputation and didn't have solid scores. Um, in, in MCAS and, and things like this. I looked at the course offerings. Um, we're really offering some incredible things at Pioneer that other districts aren't offering. And sadly, when we're in a time of um kind of this, um, you know, survival of the fittest mentality because of the school choice and charter offerings, um, every budget does involve some risk. And you have to spend some money to make money. That's, you know, um, an old business saying that, that is, stands true through the test of time. So um, with this risk for the, the risk here, and I put it in quotes because it is very small in comparison to a $14 million budget, plus we're talking about $36,000 here that could really help to set us apart and draw in more students um at the elementary level. Um, and then they will have this foundation with world languages that they will be able to carry into their high school careers. I know um that absolutely it would benefit me today if I had a foundation of um another language, um, particularly Spanish in, in our, even in Franklin County, um, from the time I was a preschooler, a kindergartner. Um, and that is actually the prime time to start to teach another language. I know it seems kind of backwards because they're learning um really how to speak proficiently in, in their native language. But that's actually the best time to, to learn another language is when you're in that early, early, early development of your language skills. Um, the state is not giving us, you know, um, the revenue that we need. The town assessments have stayed flat, have been flat for quite some time. Um, you know, our district has been diligent with the budget over the past few years. So um, the fund that, you know, the um E and D fund that we're talking about taking some money from, um, I have, I have trust that our current administration will make sure that we keep contributing to that fund so that we don't use up all of the money over the next five years. So um, you know, I, it's not something that um was top of mind for me to, uh, as a, um, a way to draw students in and to um help um really facilitate the current year's budget. But when I learned about um world languages and what they do to um promote the, the skills, not only um, you know, for the children, but it also is such an enrichment and opportunity socially for the community. Um, you know, I looked back at the mission of the school committee. And the mission, the overarching mission of the school committee is for the continuous improvement in student achievement. So that's why we're here and that's why we're asking um for um the support for this budget to include the world languages, for the continuous improvement in student achievement. So thank you for your time. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak before um we proceed with our vote? Um, I see Lois, Lois Sterns.
Lois, I think you're on mute, Lois.
How's that?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Um, I said I'm Lois Sterns. I've been chair of the Northfield Finance Committee for many years. And so I know the financial situation and what you've gone through. You've made a lot of good comments here tonight about the hopes and aspirations and the things that you want to offer. You've got some good ideas. I would like to make the suggestion that you do a better job of outreach. Who are the taxpayers we're talking about in town? And I know Tanya said, okay, ignore what the finance committee and the select board recommends, that the people will vote for it anyway and vote around them. That might be, and it might not be. We've got some towns that have higher elderly populations. Why don't you come out into the town and meet publicly with the finance committee and select boards? And we're televised and talk about these things so that some of those people that are paying the bills can hear about it and get as excited about these things as you are. I think it's, it's an opportunity you're missing. Uh, I know you, you're busy with school and you have to concentrate on parents and families and that sort of thing. But I think, you know, you think a little bit about those that are paying the bills too. And I'd like to suggest more outreach in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Appreciate that comment. Does anyone else, um, Jim, your hand is raised, but I'm not sure if it was raised from previous. Okay, uh, Mike.
Like to move, move the vote.
I'll second.
Can I just comment that when you guys vote, we need to vote by category for purposes of our overseer and the way that we're required to vote our budget at this time?
I think we're just voting on the amendment right now, Tanya.
But the amendment is what the budget is being voted at, which would be what would be brought forward for the assessments, I think.
You guys check with legal on that. I'm not sure if we do the amendment first and then go to the, the main. Vote on the amendment of the 36,000, then move on to the vote of the actual budget number of the 14 million, 888-181?
Yeah, I would think you would vote the, the amendment first and then the categories.
Thank you.
Um, so I will do. Um, so I will do, Mike, can you just restate the motion? Just for clarification.
All right, the motion is to, uh, include world language, uh, in the budget. The number for that is thirty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars. And that's for, uh, this budget, uh, that's been presented. Or the number that's been presented is a thirty-six thousand, eight ninety-one to be added to the budget.
Okay, thank you. And, and Jim Bell had seconded that motion. So I will go through here, um, and take a vote. Uh, Jim Bell?
Yes.
Reina Dastu?
Reina Dastu, Northfield, yes.
Alan Genovese?
Alan Genovese, Warwick, no.
Michelle Gi Russo?
She had to leave the meeting, Julie. Um, she got a phone call. She had to leave the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, thank you. Jeannie Milton?
Jeannie Milton, Berniston, no. I have a question. Does an amendment, like, does this amendment require two-thirds vote like a budget does?
Perhaps Adam can answer that?
Well, it would have to pass as the vote. So if your budget requires a two-third, then the amendment would.
So that, it would require a two-thirds vote, a two-thirds of, of the membership.
Okay, thank you. So Jeannie, your vote was no?
My vote was no, Julie.
Okay, thank you. Robin Knight?
Robin Knight Leiden, yes.
Karen O'Neill?
Karen O'Neill, yes.
And Nathan is still not in attendance. Michael Townsley?
Mike Townsley, yes.
David Young?
David Young, no.
And then Julie Burke, yes. Okay, so we currently have an eleven-member committee uh, with the other vacancy in Northfield. We have two members not voting this evening. And we have one, two, three, four. We need eight, we have six, yes. And one, two, three noes.
So Julie, just for clarification, um, this is kind of, it, it is strange in that for the budget, it calls for two-thirds of, of the members. So there's a twelve members. So even though we don't have positions there, it's not of those present. So you have to pretend that there's, there's actually twelve, um, which is how the regional agreement works.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a twelfth member at this point. There's not a twelfth member.
I don't believe the law cares.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't make any.
Let's have Adam clarify.
Yeah. Adam, so that you know on the regional agreement, it, it refers to the full membership. It says, it talks about two-thirds of, of, uh, the members, not of the members present.
Right, and eight is the total membership, Alan.
I don't have a copy of your regional agreement at the moment. So I don't know how I can.
Yeah, I clarified this at the, at the last meeting and, and went over this with Russ. The regional agreement, uh, refers to, it assumes that there's going to be twelve members and it refers to two-thirds of, of the members. So it, it's clear that it's not two-thirds of whoever's present. Um, it's kind of a moot, it's kind of a moot point because it, it doesn't pass right now. So we should probably just move to the next vote.
No.
I need to ask everyone to raise their hand if they want to speak just because we have a lot of people competing for, for attention here. Um, Adam, please.
I was just gonna say, in the meantime, I could reach out to Russell because he has seen the agreement and talked to Alan. So, you know, if you're going to your other vote, I'll certainly reach out to him.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Yes, um, we currently still do have a vacancy for that twelfth seat. It has not been appointed yet and we do have a formal resignation for that seat. And the town moderator needs to appoint the twelfth member. Um, Tanya?
So regardless of whether we have eleven or twelve, it's still eight because two-thirds of eleven is seven point three and you have to round up to the next full member. You don't, you can't have a third of a person. So that's what my point was. Regardless of whether we have an eleven membership or twelve, you would need eight positive votes to be two-thirds of the full membership either way. So the argument of eleven or twelve is a moot point at this time and it fails.
That's correct.
Hey, thank you for the clarification. Um, and if we have two members that aren't present, we still just have to go on the current, who is here to vote, correct?
No, that, I don't believe that's correct, Julie. And I, I spent a lot of time, so I, I'm sure Russell will get back, um, on that. I can pull out regional agreement and read it again, but, um, it, it doesn't seem to care on that. It just, it just says, uh, you know, it requires a two-thirds, um, vote of, of the members. And it's, it's pretty clear. It's not talking about the members present, so, um, I, I'm confident you're gonna get budget, yeah, if we, uh, go to the next step. But you can, you can wait to see, um, but Tanya is correct. No matter how you look at it, it's eight, you need eight.
Thank you, Alan. Um, Lois, your hand is still raised. Did you mean to have that still up? Did you want to comment again?
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay. That's okay. Tanya, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, so I do want to confirm with, in, with what Alan is saying. It is of our full membership, which is why at our past meeting, and I don't want to open old wounds, but why David was asking people to basically not attend because if we didn't have two-thirds of the people in attendance to vote on the budget, it would automatically fail. So regardless of the people that attend, it's two-thirds of your full membership, present or not present, that has to vote on, um, the budget.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. I see Adam's hand is raised.
For the record.
Hold on, hold on one second, David, okay? Just, Adam's going to speak.
Yeah, I confirmed with Russell that the, uh, agreement would require two-thirds of your full committee. So we're at the eight number in order to approve the budget.
Okay, thanks, Adam. And David?
I had urged fellow committee members to vote no. I never, I never urged people to skip the vote. It, it has the same effect. I pointed that out. But I urge people to vote no.
Thanks, David. Tanya, your hand is raised again?
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay, so that motion does not pass, uh, for the amendment of the world languages. Um, so now we're looking.
May I make a motion? Can I make a motion to, is this the right number? The fourteen million, eight, eight hundred fifty-one thousand, two ninety? Is that the correct number, Tanya?
Yes, and I have reposted it so that we can vote by category now that that is the budget that's being voted on.
Okay, just needs a second.
The motion needs to include those categories, though, for a total.
We make the original, we made the original motion. We then had a subsidiary motion, a motion to amend. That motion just failed. We're back to the motion we started with. We don't need another motion, Alan. Mike made the original motion, then he amended, attempted to amend it. That failed. We're back to the original.
I get it, but I don't think we've ever done it by categories.
Yes, yes, we have.
You guys did not read out the athletics through capital and that has to be done in order for this to pass and go to the overseer and be sent to the commissioner. We went through this last year and the year before.
Okay, um, Adam, can you just clarify? So, um, when we take this vote, should we go category by category?
If that's needed to certify, yes.
Okay.
You should probably vote, uh, you still haven't had a vote on whether or not this budget figure was approved. And then you'd go category by category would be my recommendation.
Adam, in the past, it has been, the motion has been made to read out the categories with the total of the fourteen, eight fifty-one and each category was voted on as we went through the categories. Or we can do it as a whole and if it fails, then we go back and vote category by category in case there's a certain category that someone objects to. So the motion would be athletics, one sixty, blah, 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 so forth and so on, for a total of fourteen, eight fifty-one, two ninety. And that would be the actual motion and that's how we've done it the past two years.
Okay, uh, it just, uh, it just seems if you don't know if you're gonna land on the end bigger to go category by category first. I'm not sure how that would work. But if, you know, if that's the approach you want to take, I don't see anything that would prohibit that.
Yeah, I don't want to upset the apple cart, but I also don't want to do extra work. Especially it's nine thirty.
So can we get, to get us? Oh, I'm trying to get ourselves out of this.
Okay, Alan?
Thank you. So in order to, um, move this along, how about if I make a motion to, um, approve the budget of fourteen million, eight hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred ninety, ninety dollars to include the following categories? And then if Tanya could, uh, include those categories, we'll get a second and then we can move along. So if, if, if that makes sense, I, I think we could proceed through that. Tanya, if you, you add to what is, will be included in, in that number.
Yep, or you can just read them off the screen, whichever you prefer.
I can't see that little tiny thing, um, but go ahead. You read them off, please.
Athletics, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Central office, six hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and nineteen. Elementary administration, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Elementary instructional assistant, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. Elementary salaries, two million, five eighty-seven, seven seventy-one. Elementary supplies, one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred. Facilities, nine hundred and one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. Insurance and benefits, two million, six eighty-two, six seventeen. Professional development, one hundred and one thousand, ninety-four. PVRS administration, two hundred and fourteen thousand, five eighty-five. PVRS salaries, one million, nine thirty-three, one seventy-eight. PVRS supplies, ninety-two thousand, one fifty-five. Special education, two million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Technology, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven. Transportation, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine. Tuition, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. Debt, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, six eighty-six, in capital, eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven.
So we just need a second.
I'll second that.
Um, okay, so for discussion, I see Jeannie's hand up.
Julie, I think that it's up you now to call, to go down the list and we vote on each one separately. Does that make sense to you?
Um, I was going, yeah, I was going to call a vote for this budget of fourteen million, eight hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, which included all of the line items that Tanya just read.
If that's, that works for me, if we can do it that way.
That's how we did it the last two years.
Yeah, and I believe that's what Adam just said, um, would work. If the bu- budget does not pass, that's when we would go line item by line item to make adjustments, um, if necessary. I do see quite a few hands raised. Um, Jeannie, was, was that, are you finished?
I am.
Okay. Um, Jim, your hand's raised?
Yes, I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in, but if one of the, if I have to abstain from one of the categories, athletics, um, how does that affect how I, if we vote for the whole thing?
So Adam?
We should, we should vote for, on the athletics one separately and then Jim can join on the other one.
Excuse me, Mike, isn't there one you abstained from?
No, because school lunch is in a separate fund. It's not part of the general fund budget.
I just wanted, just remember to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Adam, do you know if, um, someone would need to, if him would abstain as a coach from that particular line item?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Can you, can you say it again?
Sure, so Jim just asked if he can vote on the budget total in some? If he abstained from one particular category of the budget?
Yeah, you would, you would abstain from the category which creates the conflict.
But he can vote for the total?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mike, your hand is raised.
Uh, yes, um, I just want to say that I think the members have failed to recognize the choice and charter out numbers and where they're headed with a decision that was made tonight. Um, with that being said, uh, the towns are gonna pay more, one way or another. Unfortunately, they're gonna pay another district a lot of money. And we're gonna, I, I project we'll probably hit a million dollars next, next budget season because of this. Um, we are not showing the, the parents and the students that we're willing to, uh, improve education as you stated earlier in your, uh, words. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, Jane, you have your hand raised?
I do. I want to bring up a point of order. Mike made a motion to adopt the budget. Then you had a long discussion about an amendment and you have, never went back and acted on Mike's motion. Now you have a second motion on the floor, which I don't know if it's been seconded or not. But you need to ask your secretary where you stand because I think you have two motions in front of you.
Um, we did vote on Mike's motion with the amendment.
No, excuse me, you voted on his amendment, but you did not, you did not vote on his main motion. In order for an amendment to be on the floor, the main motion had to be there first.
So our legal team verified that, that we would vote on the amendment first.
Right, and now you're back to the main motion. You don't need a new motion. You need to vote on Mike's motion. And you guys have been doing this for a long time. You just got too deep into your discussion and forgot that you had the motion there.
Adam?
Well, the original motion and sort of the motion that was just made are the same exact motion. So it's, uh, you're really voting on the same thing. The original motion and what, uh, Alan had put on the table is the same exact budget that you're voting. So I, I, I don't see an issue with that.
I do. It's in open meeting, Rob.
Well, Julie?
Yes, Alan?
What's different is that, um, we have the categories in, in this one. So it included, because I, I heard we needed to have the category. So I'm, I'm just making sure that we touch bases on that. And so this one has included those categories. So that, I think that covers us with the state, so that's why I went down this road. So, um, the total amount is the same motion. This one includes the categories. I'm, I'm not clear, though, uh, so this is for Adam.
Can I speak next to Alan about the categories?
Yes, which we already did before. Go ahead.
So I do recall now that Jim is bringing this up from last year. The way to expedite this so that we're not here till midnight is that we go through the categories one by one. And if you want to have a no vote or an abstained vote, you raise your hand. Otherwise, you're perceived to have a yes vote, so that the sixteen categories can be processed through at a faster pace. Because there are a couple that Kristen and Jim actually both had to abstain from last year. So Jim, thank you for that attention to the categories. And Adam, just, can you just confirm that that's an okay way to vote on each of these categories in this budget?
Yeah, I think you'd have to have an amendment to the current vote if you're going to do it that way.
To just vote on the fourteen eight eighty-one and then go through each of the categories?
Right, well, were you thinking you would do that during discussion? Or that we're going to have votes on the sep, if we're having votes on the separate categories, that's different than the vote that's on the table right now?
I don't want to negate Jim's vote on the other fifteen categories in our two-thirds vote situation. So as long as all of our categories pass by the two-thirds, then it cumulatively passes a two-thirds vote for the total.
Right, so it probably makes sense to hold that vote right now. And then if that doesn't pass, you go back and do each category individually, as you indicated.
But Jim would have to abstain from a specific category, which means he can't vote on the entire budget by category. So I'm recommending we go by category and just ask for no's or abstentions.
Okay, no, I see your point. I mean, that you could do that, but we'd have to have a new motion if you're going to do it that way, because we already have a motion on the table for the vote of the full figure.
I thought that we did have a motion that included the categories since Tanya read them.
Right, but we have to, we have to actually go through and say athletics one sixty-four three hundred. And then you have to ask any no's, any abstentions. And we have to write down the no's or abstentions by category, because certain people have to abstain from specific categories, so they can't vote on the motion that was just made.
I'm going to need a lot more paper.
I'm happy to mark.
I have an idea.
David?
How about if the, if we agree that the minutes will reflect that, that when Jim acted on the, on the budget, he was not acting on the, on the athletics portion?
That sounds awesome. Is it legal, Adam?
No, the legal, the most legal way would be that we pull that out, that alone out, and we act on it, and he abstains. And then we put it back in the deck, and then we have our vote on the whole budget. And he can vote now, because we have voted without him, that that piece passes. Or we could put that in the minutes.
Do you agree?
I would agree with that, you know, really should have an amendment to do a new vote or have this motion not pass. But the only issue is we have a motion on the table. So without an amendment, you need to vote what's on the table. So I think you need an amendment right now to vote, to vote these categories individually and then do that.
So is that Alan's second motion, could that be considered an amendment?
Could we also have Mike withdraw his motion and start over?
There you go. Yes.
After we voted on them.
It's getting more and more confusing.
Well, you know, we're trying to do this right.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I want to hear those kind of, you know, those kinds of comments, because we wanted to do this right the first time, so that we don't have to redo it. Um, Alan, your hand is raised?
Yeah, so how about if I just amend my motion, which included the full amount, and then by category, which was read, and I amend the motion to, to vote on each category?
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we had a second, we could just go right through them.
Yep, I'll second.
Okay, so discussion? Uh, Tanya?
Do you want me to just read the category and amount, and you take the note, the votes? Would that be helpful?
Yes.
Athletics one sixty-four three hundred.
So we have to vote on everyone, sorry?
So if you ask for no's and abstentions, then you will have your affirmatives, and it makes the process go a little bit faster.
Okay, so please, now if Jim, Alan, and Tanya could lower your hands? Perfect. Okay, so Tanya's going to read off each category. If you are a no or an abstention, please speak or forever hold your peace. All right, go ahead, Tanya.
All right, athletics one sixty-four three hundred.
No, Mike Townsley.
Jim abstains.
Okay.
Central office six hundred and eleven one nineteen.
Okay.
Elementary administration two hundred and fifty-one thousand nine sixteen.
Okay.
Elementary instructional assistant two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four seventy-five. Elementary salary two million five eighty-seven seven seventy-one. Elementary supplies one hundred and three thousand seven hundred. Facilities nine hundred and one thousand five fifty-two. Insurance and benefits two million six eighty-two six seventeen. Professional development one hundred and one thousand ninety-four. P V R S administration two hundred and fourteen thousand five eighty-five. P V R S salaries one million nine thirty-three one seventy-eight. P V R S supplies ninety-two thousand one fifty-five. And can I ask that Alan and Jeannie mute while I'm going through these? Because I'm getting some background and Michael as well, unless you're going to vote no or abstain, thank you. Special education two million four thirty-one nine eighteen. Technology eight fifty-one five sixty-nine. Tuition eight hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Excuse me. Oh, technology was three ninety-five.
Oh, did I not read that one? I apologize. Technology three ninety-five.
You read the one below it, Tanya.
Technology three ninety-five nine seventy-seven. I'll say transportation again, eight fifty-one five sixty-nine. Tuition eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. And debt three hundred and sixty-four thousand six eighty-six. Capital eight thousand six hundred and seventy-seven.
Thank you, Tanya. So the only no or abstention we had was for athletics with one no and one abstention. Um, so is there any further discussion before we take a roll call vote?
A quick question on the athletics line, was that, does that need to be a two-thirds in order to pass? Because I don't think you got two-thirds.
Adam?
Um, I'm not certain on the particular line with the, with the extension. I think you, if you, as long as you have two-thirds on the overall vote with that, that, I think you're okay, that would be okay.
Julie, don't you have eight? Don't you have eight? If you had one no and one abstention, doesn't that still give you eight?
Well, we also have two members not present, so that would be, that would be full.
Well, but you, you still have eight. All you need is eight.
No, you don't.
No, we have seven, because we don't have a twelfth member.
Oh, I thought we got of the twelve, so it didn't make any difference. You don't have eight?
Right, but we have, we only have seven votes, we need eight.
Oh, I thought you did have eight.
Um, Robyn has a raised hand?
I know this is late in the game, but I just want to mention that, you know, we're leaving five hundred thousand dollars in case the shoe falls. You know, we could take the thirty-six thousand dollars out of E and D, just a thought.
We're only allowed to use two hundred thousand, and that cannot be amended.
Thank you. So, um, Adam feels that, you know, it's understanding that as long as we have two-thirds on the budget total, that even with one line item not being able to be, can everyone please mute? Um, that even with that one line item not having a two-thirds, we should be okay. Um, I do see David's hand raised.
In a case like this, there's rule of necessity, which I think the chairman declares it, but that would allow, despite the conflict, in order to get to the two-thirds, that Jim would be allowed to vote.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that, David, I would need.
Try Adam out on it.
Okay, that's what I was saying, I'd need legal advice on that.
Well, so rule of necessity, I'm not sure would apply there, because we do have enough to reach eight, even with the abstention. So if we didn't have enough to reach two-thirds without the individual, without the members present, then rule of necessity would apply, but I'm not sure that would apply here, because you could still have eight with your current makeup.
Okay, uh, Mike, or did you raise, lower your hand?
Um, yeah, I think that, you know, this is all part of the game. You know, we want to get something, you know, the thirty-six thousand dollars needed to pass by two-thirds, and now we've got an athletics line that didn't pass by two-thirds. And now we're going to supersede that by going right down to the main number. To me, that's not how we should be doing it, but that's just my thought.
Julie?
Yes, Alan?
So apparently, someone must not be here, because if Jeannie and Michelle and Karen and Robyn and Julie and Raina and David and I all voted yes.
Michelle is not here.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, thank you, because I'm going, why don't we have eight? Oh, okay.
Um, regardless, though, you know, we did receive the advice from, from Adam. I, that as long as we vote on the budget total, we didn't, we don't need two-thirds on each line item. Adam, is that still your position for us to, oh, I see you raised your hand, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, and I actually confirmed that with Russell. You don't need to have two-thirds on every line item, as long as the full budget passes with two-thirds. So that, you know, we don't have to worry about the individual lines that we're going through.
Okay, um, Robyn, your hand's raised?
So I know that's your legal opinion, Adam, but then what is the sense of voting the lines? What's the purpose of doing that if you don't even need, need two-thirds to do it, but you need two-thirds for everything else? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, you, you don't need to vote every line like this, this isn't the typical procedure. I know that's something you say you do there, but you really just need to vote the overall.
You told us we had to vote every line.
I think, I never said you had to. Tanya said that was a practice we had, and I don't have any, no issue with doing that, but.
Can I speak, Adam? We have to do it under our legislation that is currently in place, under our overseer. And if I submit this budget to him with one of the lines not passing two-thirds, he will not submit it to the commissioner, and we will be back in this position in another two weeks with another school committee meeting. This is a requirement of our legislation, it's not just a practice we've had.
Of your particular district?
Yes, until our oversight is done, we have to vote this way. It's part of our budget management that was put in place when our acts of two thousand and eighteen were implemented. And that's why we follow this procedure, it's not that I'm trying to make people's lives.
So that's a unique situation that you have, that is not something other districts would do.
Can everyone please mute?
Come back on for a minute, we only have seven.
Everyone needs to mute, please. Mike, I see your hand is raised?
We can have this budget pass, all we need is thirty-six thousand dollars, or at least that line. I mean, really, we are doing a disservice to the students and also a disservice to the towns, because that million dollars next year, which is at eight sixty-six now, is money going someplace else. And if we can turn the tables by providing something that no other district in the area is doing, we will be money ahead. So please, let's put the thirty-six thousand dollars in and get this budget passed. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I need a quick clarification. Um, I understand that it's not typical of a district to have to vote line by line in order, each line being two-thirds. But what I'm hearing perhaps is that per our district agreement and with our oversight, we do need to have each line pass by two-thirds in order for the overall budget to pass. So can I just get a final clarification there, Adam?
Well, I don't know what your agreement with your overseer is. I can only rely on what Tanya's saying right now without actually having that information. So I don't know how I can confirm that, I could do it after the meeting, but I can't really provide you a legal analysis without actually seeing what the agreement is.
Uh, Tanya, your hand is raised?
Yeah, so it's not a regional agreement, it's just the legislation and the guidance that we are asked to do by the overseer, for him to submit it to the commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Tanya, I'm sorry I misspoke. Um, Karen, your hand's raised?
I, I was going to concur with Tanya, because, you know, I remember that aspect of the legislation. But I was also going to suggest that we could have a discussion about that first line item and try to find out why someone voted no.
I see Jeannie's hand is up.
I was gonna, I was gonna say early before Karen spoke, I too would like to hear what the answer to Karen's question is. But I guess it sounds like this has to be sent in writing, what the overseer and the legislation is saying. That writing has to be sent to our town attorney, so they have it on file.
Okay, um, Mike, your hand is up.
Yes, Act two ninety-five, I believe, is on file at the towns. Yes, Act 295, I believe, is on file at the towns' offices. So I guess questioning why I voted no. Uh, it's because the district needs to think about what we are paying out for the school choice and charter. We ignoring this is is equivalent to ignoring the food lunch deficit for 10 years. If we ignore this and don't add to our children's education, so parents don't leave here, that's the reason I voted no, because for $36,000, we can have this budget. It'll be 0%. Let's do this. Let's make a deal. Let's let's get the the world language added in at a younger age. The world is changing. Um, I personally deal with, uh, people that speak foreign language at least once a week on the job site or in people's homes. This is the wave of the future and the wave of our education. And if we can serve that purpose and be one of the only districts around doing it, for $36,000 to get this program off the ground and have a budget voted tonight, I think we can do that. I really think that we gotta look at that million. We used to have a million dollars coming in. Now we got a million dollars going out. Let's make the right decision here. We need to be smart and advocate for the students, advocate for the community, and advocate for the workforce. This $36,000, we're going to hang a budget up for that. It's just not fair to the students or the community.
Jeannie, your hands up? Doesn't look like she's there. Okay, so it looks like we are, um, in a conundrum here. Um. I guess I need some advice. Um. I'm not sure that we can vote. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Julie?
Yeah.
Can we check with the, uh, legal counsel on a reconsider, seeing how we're in the same meeting? And we haven't left this meeting for a reconsider on the 36,000?
Sure, Adam?
You're looking to return your former motion? I I'm not sure I understand.
Do a reconsider on the motion that failed earlier?
Yeah, again, the this line by line vote is not something that would typically be done. I guess your overseer is requiring it, but if you wanted to reexplore that at this point, the overall motion is going to fail if you don't.
He's discussing reconsidering the $36,000 amendment, not the line by line. So if the amendment passes, then we can go through the new line by line that would then have to pass by two thirds also.
So Adam, it would be a reconsider on the original amendment for the $36,000 for world languages?
So you haven't, you know, if you haven't completed this vote, I don't know how you can go back to that vote. So I think you have to finish this one before you go back to your former vote, but, um, it's almost. It will fail. I mean, but you you complete motion was every category, so you do have to go through them.
We just did, and there was only a no and abstention on athletics. So the others were unanimously passed.
You did go through them, so, you know, whatever motion you put on the floor, there is none on the floor right now. So someone wants to reexamine that 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 item. There's no reason why you couldn't do that.
Mike, your hand is raised?
So being that this is needs to is, uh, would be a reconsider, and you're required to have two thirds, who would need to make that, uh, motion? Would it be the, uh, anybody that voted, uh, yes for it, but it didn't pass because it wasn't a two thirds? Would it have to come from one of the others that voted no?
No, it would have to vote come from someone who voted in the affirmative.
Yes.
I think it's from the prevailing side, in which case it would, even though they had the most votes, it's the other side. I don't know.
So I that would, so David, correct me if I'm wrong. I could reconsider that, or if somebody on that side would like to do that?
Tanya, your hand is raised?
No.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Jim, your hand is raised?
Uh, Julie?
So we 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 reconsider that number, and if it gets voted down, where do you stand, Mike?
We have to get that $36,000. That's that's where I stand. I mean, for $36,000 to start a world language program, I, you know, I just don't see moving forward without doing that. It just, it baffles to me, we're spending $866,000 out of this budget to send to some other district or charter. And we could start turning that around by offering something to 300 students between two elementary schools, and that's that's critical to me.
So we're at a stalemate?
I see a lot of hands raised. Um. Robin, you're waving your hand?
Yeah, I just want to consider that, look at the the numbers that we had. I know you wanted two thirds, and I and I understand that we have to do that legally, but we voted two to one, um, two to one that we wanted to do this. So it, you know, you can sit, you're acting like Michael's the obstructionist. I'm not 100% sure that he is the obstructionist here. You know, overwhelmingly, it's two to one that this committee would like to support that. So I'm asking you, people that voted in the negative, to reconsider your votes so that we could bring this, um, world language into the curriculum and also, um, you know, move the budget, which is what we need to do for the towns. And I'm just asking you to please reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Um, Alan, your hand is raised?
Alan, you muted.
Thank you. We missed so many opportunities to include the public and to and to get that energy going forward. We we had one of the people from the the citizens, um, Lois, or I'm not sure who that was, but, um, who talked about, you know, engaging the public and getting them excited as as the committee is about doing certain things. My my point around this is is that if we involve the public and we and you decide to do this with the public support and you can put out there that, um, it's going to require, you know, having this, uh, percolate through the system. And so there'll be other additions, and you get people to understand that this is a systemic change to the district to improve it, then that's how you garner support and you get people to do things like this. You we you don't get it by by just leaving them out of the loop and saying, well, this is what I want. I I want it, and I want it now, and and we're just gonna keep pushing it through no matter what. And I I just think we're doing a disservice when we continue that kind of, um, kind of attitude. It's it's not what we should be doing as a committee.
Thanks, Alan. Uh, Karen, you have your hand raised?
I do, thank you. Um. I'm just wondering, with three of the votes, one of them not even present, being in the negative, all representing all the people from Warwick, I have tried not to think in a divisive way, but actually, those three people don't have any skin in the game. In a year, they're going to be gone. So they don't have to consider the long term health of the district. And I think they need to justify to the rest of us why they would go against the majority of their colleagues who think it's well worth $36,000 to offer this to the children of our districts. You folks need to step up and really make plain why this is $36,000. If I won the lottery tomorrow, I'd give the district $36,000 to do this. So please tell us why you want it worth this. It is not because there hasn't been public input. That many, many changes happen in districts without drumming up support from the public. Um, so what is it that is really holding you back? Thank you.
I see Jeannie's hand raised?
Um, Karen, I need to correct you. The three no votes did not all come from Warwick because I was one that voted no. My other thing is, I agree with David that the budget needs to find the $36 within the original budget that was proposed. I'm very disappointed when the monies were reallocated from the sixth grade not moving up, when that monies were, they were looking to allocate those monies, and the budget stayed the same, while this proposal was not included in that allocation. I'm sorry. We all have budgets, we all have to stay within them. I will not change my vote.
Jean, I just want, I want to correct you on something. I was talking about Nathan, not you. He's a no vote by not being here.
Okay.
That makes three people from Warwick. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mike.
And that I agree with David that the $36,000 has to come in with the origin, come from within the original budget that was proposed.
Thank you, Jeannie. Mike has his hand raised. David, Tanya, and Alan. Go ahead, Mike.
I'd like to, um, maybe ask John or Tanya if we, uh, changed that number to $25,000 and got the program started and found some other monies in the budget. Um, the overseer did say that he wasn't opposed to looking at other things, but, um, I think we can do this. I think we can work collaboratively between the administration, drop it to $25,000, and add something to the elementary schools and get this budget passed. Let's compromise here. Um, we all want something. We all want this budget to pass tonight, and I think we can do it. I think, uh, I'd like to have John speak to that. If we did lower to 25,000, um, and see what he has to say.
So you're saying, Mike, you you're asking me if we lower the amount to 25,000, if we can bring foreign language in to the elementary schools?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct, by and then find some other monies in the budget, like Jeannie was just saying. Um.
I mean, I guess I don't have a clear cut answer. I mean, that's not a lot of money, and I'm not, I'm not sure we could possibly look at other, you know, other things in that budget. I just don't know if I'm prepared to answer that right now without without looking and analyzing all that. I mean, we're going on over three hours of this meeting. I could barely think straight at this time. Um, but, you know, I'm going to be honest with you. I mean, I think, you know, potentially we could, you know, but I can't give a clear cut yes or no, but potentially we could look at at, you know, at things and see if we can make it work.
All right.
Okay, so Mike and Jeannie, if you could lower your hands. David?
Karen's comments were as off the mark as in the previous meeting, when she said that folks who live in Warwick shouldn't be chairman or vice chairman. We're here representing the district, and I guess I'm playing all the angles. I'm on the sixth town planning board, um, because I don't think Pioneer is going to survive. I don't know how optimistic I am about Warwick's actually pulling off, leaving. Um, but everything I do, I'm, I am thinking about the kids in the Pioneer District. So truly uncalled for. Um. I spawned a, uh, Mike's play here. He's he's being a Joe Manchin of our school committee. Um, I I used a procedure and and a six boat jammed things up, but now Mike's going to try to try to leverage things.
David, I'm going, I'm going to mute you if, and I'm going to mute any member if if they call out a number, another member directly. Um. Okay, we, Alan, your hand is raised? It looks like you're on mute, Alan.
Oh, thank you. I don't know why I keep forgetting that. Um, I I felt obligated to respond because because Karen, you know, asked me to to explain, and I just wanted to say that I think Jeannie did a really good job summarizing what my thinking was and hoping that it would be done within the confines of this budget. Um, I guess I would also just add to that, that, uh, systemically, we're we're making a change. And when I made the comment early about, I don't want to put something in and then end up taking it out. Um, so we put elementary in, and then we look at the middle school or the high school, and then we find something's tight. And so, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we come together with a comprehensive plan on how this percolates up through the system. And so if they can find this within the existing budget, you know, I certainly, that's why I was supporting, um, the the original budget, hoping that they would go back and relook at that and then come forward at some point with with a plan of how they, um, plan to implement this as it goes through the system. Um, I also, there was a reason I asked the the Rick Kingsley about, does he look at the budget? And he looks at the, um, and he looks at, you know, the finances. And he said, well, you know, it's, 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 it's a challenge, and it's something that, you know, the committee has to balance. And I just don't think that that, um, we're, we're taking that into consideration, that, um, I hope they can do it within the existing budget and and we can pass a budget tonight, and that we have on the agenda, maybe every other meeting where the administration comes forward and provides updates of what they're doing for other things that we have, that they're working on, the sixth grade transition, how they're going to be implementing some of these curriculum programs over the years, so that we can make more informed decisions and and ask questions and not be doing it in the 11th hour. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. I see John's hand is is raised?
Can I just respond to that with all due respect? We provide, in my superintendent's reports, updates every meeting. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Tanya, your hand is up?
Yeah, so including it in the original budget would mean going back to the administrative team for another meeting, going back to the budget subcommittee for another meeting, and coming to the school committee again for another meeting. We have to have assessments to our towns by state law no later than April 30th. So in addition to that, I just want to say that when we were looking at the reallocation of the 167,000 from sixth grade, world language was originally in there. And we were requested by the administration to make it a one full time FTE adjustment counselor at the high school, which left us with $8,200. So in order to start the implementation of world language, the idea was brought forward to add that $36,000 in to bring us to essentially what our FY21 assessments would have been to the towns in order to get both of those for our students and have the things that were originally in this budget. You know, you want to take a adjustment counselor off the table for world language? I mean, I'm not the educator or whatever, but we can't cut other programs to bring this in. But if we're talking about a minimal increase to the assessments already presented to make this happen, and essentially in two or three years, bring us benefits two and threefold. years, bring us benefits two and threefold because we're going to be keeping students and not sending them out, you have to invest upfront for the results, or we're going to keep sending more kids out unless kids are going to stay in our district. And it is going to cost the towns more, and we're going to have to continue to cut programs to our current students.
Thanks, Tanya. Mike, is your hand raised again?
Yes, I concur with Tanya. We need, we need to make the investments. This is a small amount of money to start something great. The risk is minimal. The loss on the other end, charter and choice, is great. It's right there in the budget in front of you. $866,000, we are paying for somebody else to educate our kids. I mean, I can do the math. It's pretty simple. We are losing money to going because we're not providing. People, people are willing to pay $22,000 to send their kids to private schools because of educational needs. They're looking for more, and we have an opportunity here to show that we're willing to provide more. For $36,000, Kevin McEwing gave a good explanation to this program last week for curriculum personnel, and he did a darn good job at it. This has been discussed, I think they were discussing it back in the summer last year, John and him, and it was in the budget. It was cut because we were going to move sixth grade. Sixth grade didn't get moved. Let's do something for about 300 kids between two elementary schools. This is the lifeblood of our district. We need to be pioneers here.
Thank you. Robin?
You know, I think one of the aspects of a really good, highly functioning committee is to allow your subcommittees to do their work, to do the research, and to make a recommendation. And then short of somebody's, like, leg getting cut off or getting killed by it, I really think if you want a school committee and a committee to be successful, you have to trust your subcommittees, you know, and I think that may be a kind of a core issue with us. I'm not sure. It seems like we second guess the budget committee, we second guess the curriculum committee. I've got a building and grounds committee and a district agreement committee meeting tomorrow. There's no impetus to want to be on subcommittees and put your time in if every time you come to the school committee, you're shot down. I think in order for this school committee to function at the level that it should, you need to empower your school committee, your subcommittees, you need to trust their decisions. And I have to tell you that I think that's a really powerful thing to make this committee move forward, and I think it's something that we should do tonight.
Thank you, Robin. I have, like I said, I had been monitoring the Facebook feed as well for community members' comments. We do have a comment. I've been asking if it's okay for me to read them. Tim and Wendy Trillis, my wife and I are taxpaying members of the PV RSD. We are both retired on a fixed budget and are willing to support the district budget. We want PV RSD to offer exciting programming that will attract students to our district. And they said they made that comment based on Lois stating that we need to engage our taxpayers. I haven't gotten a response yet if it's okay for me to share another comment. So, oh, and I did get a response from Kim and Sheridan. After watching the curriculum subcommittee meeting, I am concerned that there are a lot of demands on the elementary administration and staff. Is this the right time to implement world language when they are already tasked with implementing the new ELA curriculum and transitioning two grades up to the middle school next year? I just wanted to add those comments. So I believe that where we stand right now, we will, the original, the motion will not pass for the, for the budget as it stands. I see, Mike, your hand is raised?
I think Robin's was up before mine.
I just lowered it. I'm good. I got nothing.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to move to reconsider the $36,000 back to the budget or into the budget.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All right, so we will go ahead and vote. Jim Bell?
Yes.
Rena Dastu?
Yes.
Alan Genovese?
No.
Michelle Gerusso? I don't believe he's here. Jeannie Milton?
No.
Robin Nipe?
Yes.
Karen O'Neill?
Yes.
Nathan is not here. Michael Townsley?
Yes.
David Young? I don't believe he's here. And Julie Burke, yes. So we have one, two, three, four. Again, six yeses. Two no's, and three, three members who are not in attendance. So the motion does not pass. Jeannie, your hand is up?
We, Julie, I don't know how this impacts things. We only have eight members present right now.
It doesn't matter. It's a full membership.
May I make a motion that we go back to 14,851,000? Sorry.
I believe you mean 14 million.
14,851,290 for the FY22 budget.
Just as a point of order, I believe it will need to be voted again, line by line.
At this point, we can, yeah, reconsider. It has to be reconsidered, and then we would have to read out the lines again.
I think you're right. I think that's a motion to reconsider the 14,851,290 with the categories. Just trying to get a budget tonight.
Is there a second? Jeannie, your hand is raised. I don't know if that's a second or?
No, I did raise it again. Thank you, Julie. If we pass this budget tonight, the original budget, there's no reason why we can't come back at another time to revisit the $36,000.
Tanya?
Once the budget's voted, in order to implement a program or make any changes, we would actually have to do a transfer vote within our current budget to make that happen once the assessments are set.
Excuse me, haven't we done that before, Tanya? We've made transfer votes?
Right, but I'm saying we wouldn't come back to a school committee meeting, like you're saying, to revoke the budget. It would be done as a transfer once the assessments are set and the towns vote. So I just was correcting the procedural description.
Which is fine. Thank you.
Alan, is your hand raised?
Oh, no, I was sitting here seeing if it had a second or not. If not, I guess we make a motion to adjourn.
Um, Robin?
Since Alan didn't get a second, I would like to get a motion to adjourn because I can't see this going anywhere tonight. And frankly, you know, we only have half of our, quite a few of our members aren't here and have left, so.
You're right, Robin. We're just going to go round and round. And round.
So is there?
I'll second that. Yes.
Discussion?
Adjourn. Yeah.
I don't know.
Robin, you're on mute. All right, so I'll go ahead and do a roll call, I mean, do a vote here on the motion to adjourn, which was seconded. Jim Bell?
Yes.
Rena Dastu?
Yes.
Alan Genovese?
Yes.
Michelle is not here. Jeannie Milton?
Yes.
Robin Nipe?
Yes.
Karen O'Neill?
Yes.
Nathan Schwartz not here. Michael Townsley?
Yes.
David Young? He's not back. And Julie Burke? No, I say we stay and hash this out, but the motion passes to adjourn. So we will need to go back to the drawing board. Thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening. We still have a lot of work cut out for us, but we will adjourn for tonight. Thank you.